Good evening. The regular city council meeting for June 21st, 2018 is called to order at 7:30. Madam Clerk?
The pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Councilman Baudier.
Present.
Councilman Benton.
Present.
Councilman Hewitt.
Absent.
Councilman Johnson.
Present.
Councilman Wheeler.
Present.
Mayor Misselli.
Present.
Police Chief Walker.
Here.
Fire Chief St. Seer.
Present.
City Attorney Beers is absent.
He's not going to make it.
And City CPA Linda Lulu.
She's on.
And Municipal Clerk Nicole is present. I'd like to start off tonight by congratulating our videographer. He is the proud new father of a three-week baby girl.
Yay!
And his talents are on display, I'm sure, for the proud Papa to show all his pictures when we take a break or something, or after the council meeting, and she's absolutely beautiful. So congratulations, Paul.
Thank you all, she looks like her mom.
Recently, I shared with some people that a family member had been hit by a motor vehicle accident while cycling. He was dragged for 138 feet. He suffered severe broken bones, multiple complex fractures throughout his body, internal injuries and burns. He was scheduled for his sixth surgery within a two-week period. Miraculously, he was spared traumatic brain injury, and it's in large part and mostly due to that he was wearing a cyclist's helmet. We are sincerely grateful for the excellent care received by first responders and the hospital professional staff and caregivers who saved his life and who are working daily to help him recover. I have been personally moved by the outpouring of support from friends and the community. Everyone's prayers and kind acts are greatly appreciated. And to all our cyclists, please remember to always wear a helmet, have your safety gear on, have your cellphone with you, and personal identification when riding. And to everyone, just be safe. So thank you. Special presentations, Calvin Hotmeyer, the city engineer.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here. The Gulf Coast Pipeline Rehab Project is officially substantially complete as of this week. All the pipe has been completed. They're still doing restoration work. We still have a lot of things to find. Ames is going through all of the videos to make sure the pipe has been done correctly, and they're going in the field and checking the restoration. So please, if you get any complaints about sod that's not been down, or we still have a sinkhole that was done as part of their work, let me know so we can keep it on the list. We are tracking those down one by one to get it done. The dollar values I gave you earlier last month haven't changed. They still have not asked for an additional dollar. They have asked for approximately $875,000 of their $1.4 million. We paid 90 percent, 789. We have a 10 percent retainage requirement. The city did have to complete one piece of pipe using Veolia forces, and that was along 7701 Wilson. That cost will be deducted from any final payment that goes to GCU. So there's still work to do, but, you know, from an official standpoint, we are declaring them substantially complete because the pipe functions as it is. We still have restoration work, and again, if you get any complaints, we're happy to go look at them because there are a lot of little places here, there, backyards that aren't really visible. So we are going back and looking at them, but it's going to take a little time, but that is proceeding well. Pump Station 8 at Ninth and Grove is complete. Road's been replaced. The bypass pump is done. Veolia has replaced two of the three pumps with rebuilt pumps and motors. The third is coming sometime very soon. So we're 100 percent operational there because two pumps are what caused the design flow to be met. The roadway work near Harahan Elementary has started earlier this week. We've completed the small portion of east. Marquette's done. Prados has been, new base has been put in. I expect that'll be done in the next week or two at the most, but that's going well. Our next step, we'll be working with Barriere to work on the Elodi area. But we've got this in line so that it's done during the summer and won't disturb the school issues. Pump Station 6, which is on, just off of Wilson, we are rerouting it so it pumps to the plant itself and comes out of 8, that we've got a little more flexibility in the system. That project is nearing completion of design. We should bid that late summer, and the contract should be complete by spring of 2019. And that'll be the last project in the clean water program, the loan program. Other projects we have going on, we got a wind retrofit that is working on roofs and doors and windows. City Hall, senior center, fire station, we've already done the gymnasium doors, and we'll be working on the, excuse me, we've done the maintenance doors. We're working on the gymnasium roof next. Those projects are coming on. That's a $300-plus thousand grant from FEMA, and we've got some matching funds to do. And then we have a streetscaping project along Jefferson Highway that is primarily a pedestrian access issue so that you can walk from one end of Harahan to the other end. Redoing sidewalks, touching some drainage issues, handicap crosswalks, again, that was also a tap grant from DOTD that there are some matching funds. That's what I have as a presentation. I'm open to any questions.
I have one question. Just recently, with certain repairs that were being done in the Harahan over there by Wilson area, they had a lot of sewage backup. Do we send notice out to the citizens beforehand that they're going to be doing the work and they have the possibility of having sewage backup?
Generally speaking, yes. When we did the final repair, we did notify everyone that we were going back in, tearing out streets, tearing out the fences, and working in the yards. What happened was the contractor, the initial contractor, GCU, went in there, the plans called for a 55-foot repair. For whatever reason, they did 35 feet and went home. All I can say is that last 20 feet was where the real problem was, that their activities made it worse, such that when plumbing was in there this weekend, there was no pipe to be found. They filled the lines with sand. As a result of them being filled with sand, when we tried to flush them with high-pressure water, we did pressurize some sewer systems and caused some issues. So we did not notify them at that time because I didn't realize how bad it was going to be. I didn't realize how much sand we were talking about. We did notify the four immediate homeowners that we were going to be working in their backyards, but we did not go down the street, down Wilson, toward Rathford. Kind of a lessons learned, we should have gone wider, farther, but I did not realize how much sand was in the line. I came back Friday night to see the situation, to review the videotape, to make sure we were going in the right direction. It took them all day Friday to clean that sand out. So that did happen. The lady next to 7701 did have an issue, and I think she had it twice. We are responding to a DEQ request because of that spillage, so we are addressing that issue.
Okay. And I don't know if this is you or if this is the mayor, who, if you can just inform the citizens when they have these problems, they should contact the city directly?
That would be the easiest thing. Everyone's done really well with using report of concern, email. If they want to call, we've messaged, we'll get back to them. It's in real time when they use the electronic system, but anyway, they think.
And if it does happen, what steps do we take to clean up or fix the problem?
Blue Flash, who was the person who did it most recently, has insurance to go in and clean up the work. The previous was the GCU contractor. He has insurance as well, but I don't know what he did. The same situation, we had a rock go over a fence under a carport or under an awning and took out a glass door with an embedded Venetian blind in it, and luckily enough, she had videotape, surveillance videotape of her backyard where she could prove to the contractor that rocks were coming over from their operation, and as a result, the window was replaced in like less than a week. I was real pleased with how he treated that, but we have had some issues with.
Sewer's a little different story. You need to get that out right away.
I understand that.
Do they contact whoever they want to clean, or then they file against the insurance?
Typically, it's Service Masters that clothes out there and cleans up, but again, it's a mixture of how active the homeowner wants to be. Typically, they clean it up because they need it cleaned up. It's your house. You know, typically, it doesn't flood the house, it splashes a room, and it is still atypical. It's not something that's normal. You know, I've flushed lines, you know, certainly not like Blue Flash does for the last 50 years, but I've done it for 30 years and never had it happen, and it's happened at least twice, if not three times, on this project alone. So I understand it.
So it's not a normal type thing?
It's not at all. The way your sewer system is built is that it should vent through the roof. You should get no back pressure because the sewer system is not a pressure system. You know, it should have no pressure in it. It's all gravity-fed. There's air gaps. You have P-traps in your house for the sole purposes of keeping the gases from backing up into your houses, and then it vents to the roof. That should release the pressure. Problem is here, we had to do higher pressure than normal because we had an eight-inch pipe full of sand. That's not typical either. So that was a lot of things happening at once. Rear lots are always a little bit more fun to play with than out in the street. You're a lot closer to the house. Most of these areas are also where there were septic tanks and then have tied into a common system, especially in that Wilson area from, again, that's the way I've been told history took place out there, and it's about right, the way I'm seeing it.
So, Mr. Hotmeyer, who is reviewing the work from Gulf Coast? Who's watching over them?
That's Ames' design group.
So I spent some time, probably the past three weeks on Wilson, I'm just trying to learn what's going on, trying to figure it out, because it's always been a problem. It's been a problem since this administration, before this administration, and before that administration. And I was actually in the yard doing the work, where they were doing the work, and I won't say his last name, but Mr. Bill's yard. And I noticed that, I'm going to meet with him every day, and so the weekend comes, and Monday comes, so what happens is the gentleman's yard is like on a downward incline, because I guess there's a broken pipe in there. So it's on a downward incline. So the repair gets done, your 38-foot repair gets done, right, all the way up to the light pole. Well, for some reason, this company doesn't want to mess with that light pole, so they just don't do the work.
Right.
So who is, who's there to tell them, and I'm there, and I'm no insult to anyone, but there was no one on the job that could speak English and tell me why that wasn't being fixed?
I agree with you. We do not control the contractor.
Does the city not have it? So let me, like, my cousin is an inspector for roads for the state, and when people are out doing roads, that inspector's on that site at all times, taking concrete samples, watching over the, do we?
We don't have that in this job. We do not have full-time inspection. We don't have the funds for full-time inspection, so we have part-time inspection. We have periodic inspection. A little bit, it's Edwin going out there, it's me going out there, and it's the design contractor going out there. On this particular case, if you will remember, the gentleman two doors down, the fence didn't get replaced for three months.
Oh, yeah.
All right?
And did you see how they repaired it? They nailed a stick in it.
Well, have you, yeah, have you seen it since?
I have not seen it since.
Okay. Brand-new fence. We took care of it, all right? I agree with exactly what they did, a bad job there. At 7701, the fence was back in two weeks' time or less. They didn't finish the job, but they put the fence back. It was mind-boggling.
Right.
The logic. And I spent the next three weeks saying, when are you going to do it? What did you do? Why aren't you finished? Show me the videotape that it is done, and I'll leave you alone. Day after the repair, there was a sinkhole. I mean, there was a serious sinkhole that we informed the contractor, I'm holding you responsible for all the sand in the system, you need to stop the sinkhole, you need to do something to keep it from getting worse, from getting more sand in the system. They did a jury-rig fix where they put down a hay bale, they put down some tarps to try to keep the rainwater out. It did. It held mosquitoes instead, but, you know, and then I fought with them for the next three weeks about doing that. Royland is a prime example. I've had five piles of dirt at the Royland parking lot. I now have one, but they're still not done.
So when they do a terrible job like they did, are they not breaching contract?
Yes, they are.
But why are they still working? Why are we having people here anymore? Because I've done a little bit of homework on GCU, and I can't find nothing good, not a single thing anywhere good with these people.
I'm not in disagreement with you, but we're in a low-bid, state-bid issue because this is state-funded, so we've got to deal with the low bid and bid laws. We're going to be in a lawsuit with them because we're holding funds.
We should be.
Well, we will be. There's no doubt about it. As I said, to date, we've paid them 58 percent of the money. They have done work, they are due compensation, but we have done some of their work, we will get reimbursed for that work. So it's not over, but at least the work is done, and most of the restoration is done.
One last question. Is GCU filming their own construct, their own pipe, or is it an outside company?
They are required to provide a video, so they are doing their own filming, but we can check the video.
That's a little weird, wouldn't you think?
Again, we don't have the funds. It's part of the contract. This is a typical way of doing it. You do the work, that way you control the forces. You control where your TV cameras are, you can schedule them properly. We still have to review the videotape, and Ames is reviewing the videotape. We've got the original work that was done in 2014, '15 with Blue Flash as part of the assessment. So we can check house connections, see where the house connection is, we can check to make sure we have not some other video location, because every one of them is unique.
How do you know?
Well, it's because you know at 75 feet, there's a house connection from that manhole, and then another 42 feet, there's another house connection. If you're reviewing a videotape where we had to fix something between those, we can check those distances. And if we think they're lying, then we can have Blue Flash go out there, or someone else go out there and videotape it, and it just adds to our court case.
And who pays Blue Flash when they go out there?
Well, again, that's part of our lawsuit, so we have to pay them to, as part of our...
So we're just putting out money, I understand, to get the job done. These people have been paid 58 percent of, I'm assuming 100, correct, on the contract?
Yeah.
But yet, we're paying other people to go back and do their job.
Yes. Because we're going to be in a lawsuit to collect the money. Well, again, I'm not asking them to send me a bill.
No, I understand.
You know, so I'm happy that they haven't asked for more money, but I know it's coming because, you know, but it's going to be, you know, they got to prove their quantities. This is...
I know you're not an attorney, but you are very knowledgeable about the contracts of this nature and the language that is in the contract, and how do we hold them to a standard? And if you could just kind of explain that a little bit?
There are, you know, the standard specifications have, you know, require certain testing requirements. For example, all the work that was done on Colonial Club, the concrete had to meet a certain strength requirement, and the compaction underneath the concrete roads had to meet. We paid beta testing to come out and test those things. So we proved that they had 4,000 PSI contract, we proved that they had 95 percent density on the compaction. So we did have our own inspectors doing that type of work that is of a more critical nature. Rear lot work, it's hard to get in there to track the compaction. A lot of these were point repairs that are involving just digging down and replacing 10 feet of pipe. You know, so there's a certain amount of trust that you put into this, but again, they still have a one-year warranty period, there's a performance bond associated with that, we will be watching the road patches. I think you pointed out a couple of road patches that were already bad, that have already been fixed, but again, we held their fire, feet to the fire net, and they went back and fixed those. So they haven't left town yet, but they're close, so I'm trying to, I'm not sure if I want to run them out of town or not, so I've got both sides of this.
And the performance bond?
The performance bond is a one-year performance bond from the day of final acceptance. We haven't reached, we haven't reached final acceptance, you know, we've got another month or two before that happens, they got a year's worth of warranty for all the work they did during that period. I doubt that they'll come back and fix it, but we can go to the performance bond, which would then fund us to have it repaired.
To pay somebody else to fix it.
Right. But again, it wouldn't be our expense directly.
It would be the bond.
Mr. Hotmeyer, I don't mean to beat...
It's 100 percent of the performance.
I don't mean to beat a dead horse here, but I'm just, I don't know, I'm still trying to wrap my mind around why somebody didn't inspect that spot, Mr. Bill's yard, and then high-pressure system, pump high-pressure through these systems, through the thing and then back up, and then Wilson, just so, I don't, I mean, I'm sure you know...
Well, I can, well, it really happened in a couple of days.
But the houses are right on top of the, they're way closer to the sewer lines than a normal house would be. So you don't even really need high-pressure to blow up somebody's house, you just need good medium pressure before you shoot sewage back all over somebody's house. So you would think that whoever's inspecting this would be even more diligent, especially because that was a bad repair. That was a terrible, Mr. Bill's yard was terrible. So why would that not be inspected, and then all of a sudden, boom, less jam, high-pressure down these pipes? I've been in a couple of these houses where these toilets were blown up, and I got to tell you, it is terrible.
Well, the reason it was after the fact why it was, it was a terrible repair, and the contractor put the fence back up, put dirt down, and left.
Like, I was there, and there'd a big hole in the ground, that was on Friday, I go back on Monday, the fence is up and everything, I went, what the heck happened here, Mr. Bill?
That's how fast it was. That's, you know, I went back the next day to see how it was, and they were done. Well, they had covered up the hole.
They were done.
They had covered up the hole. I agree. You know, it's...
I'm, yeah.
And...
This has not been one of my more fun locations.
And that address, we, when we entered into this project, we wanted that done first.
The rear lot work was supposed to be done first, and we beat on them from the day we had the contract, when are you doing the rear lot work? Well, we got to get somebody to deal with the power pole, you know?
And then there are delay issues when they delay, and the city has...
Well, we've got liquidated damages, we've got nothing to charge.
Right, that's what I was wondering if you would tell them a little bit about what liquidated damages were.
The official contract completion date is, I believe, March 22nd. So from March 22nd to June 16th, 17th, this weekend, there are liquidated damages, and those include, I think it's $150 a day plus cost. That involves the engineering costs, the city inspection costs, and other costs on a daily basis. So, you know, we're looking at $40,000, $50,000 worth of expenses that'll probably be charged against, plus this other repair.
All right, one more question I have for you. With the previous city engineer and the previous administration, when this loan was made, and I'm almost positive, I was there when we did this, we graded everything. Ones, twos, threes, fours, fives, I believe it was, right? Ones most important, twos, you know, and from what I understand, this company is out, and they're trying to go after fixing their three, fours, and fives instead of grabbing the ones like they should be doing, like Mr. Bill's yard's obviously a one, and they got put to the back. That's some silly stuff, and somebody should be on there, but...
Everything in this contract was a one.
Everything.
All of it was one. We didn't do the threes and fours. We occasionally did the two when it was next to a one. This company, as I understand it now, is a cured-in-place contractor. They do the slip lining of the cured-in-place. That's what they did, that's their prime focus. They subbed out all the underground work, all the dirt work. It's allowed within the contract for them to do that, but they had to bring in a second contractor because the first guy was so far behind.
This company, from what I understand, is infamous for going out on to jobs, and not just here, all over the place, and trying to eat up whatever budget they have by doing as little work as possible on the easiest jobs that are available.
I have had the occasion of being called by Slidell to find out how this contractor did, and I gave him my honest opinion.
It's a miracle.
But when it went to the bid process originally, there was no reason to disqualify.
There was some complaints, they were $700,000 lower than the next low bidder.
We know why.
Yes, we do. But again, we can, you know, we still have that $700,000 to do more work, not with them.
And you explained low-bid practice. What do we got to do to change that? I mean, is this state reps? It's a state thing?
It's a state thing. It's a state bid law.
It's a federal thing, too.
It's a bid law. You know, we are dealing with, while it's state funds, there are federal requirements in here. There are Davis Bacon wage rates that are required, as well as minority participation requirements that are part of this because it's federal seed money. The money's all from the state, but the federal government gave them the first $20 million, the first $100 million, and then the loan program is a self-perpetuating process, but it still has federal seed money. So there are a lot of things within federal bid law that is there to help the little guy.
And it becomes...
Not the owner.
Yeah.
And it becomes very difficult when you're in the middle of a project, and one of the things that they're looking at nationally is that if you have difficulty with a contractor or firm performing, it is so cost prohibitive to a government entity, a municipality, our city, to stop the project and then restart the entire bid project. It's very difficult. It's not like the private sector that if you are building a house, or you're putting a roof on your home, and you are very dissatisfied, you see that, you know, a third through the project, they're not coming every day, you can just fire them and get someone else and get another, you know, your second choice in place. And this type of program with the bid laws, it is very difficult, cost prohibitive, et cetera.
We had a couple of options with 7701. We could have called in their performance bond. That would have been another five or six months of waiting for that company to come in and hire a contractor to fix this work. So we, you know, Mr. Bill needed it fixed now. That was, he's had the problem, the gentleman behind him on the Wilson side has had the problem for years.
Years.
Okay? And it was literally, we want the rear lot work done first for two reasons. One, we thought we were going to have the biggest problems. Two, this is the opportunity, if you do it first, if I find something next door, I could add that. Not ever going to expand the work on this guy, but we could have fixed that problem while we're in the neighborhood. But I can't do it now that you're at the end of the job. There's no time left. So that was one of the reasons we pushed. First meeting we had, when we signed the contract, when are you doing the rear lot work? And they just never showed up. You know, the stick I have is the paycheck, and I've got 100 percent of the pipe in the ground at, right now, 58 percent of the cost. They're going to get more money, I mean, but they're going to have to finish work, they're going to have to prove the quantities of pipe. They're going to work harder for the next 40 percent than they did for the first 58. And I have had discussions with Gilbert about what we need to do for documentation as it relates to the oncoming lawsuit.
You know, I was back there working on Wilson, and I'm trying to learn what's going on, and I've done a lot of homework just in the neighborhood and the streets and everything, and I actually climbed down in the hole in Mr. Bill's yard, and I grabbed a piece of this pipe out of the ground, and it was really unique. I'd never seen nothing like it before, and it actually looked like an old-generation type of PVC with a cement liner.
It's called truss pipe. It was two lines, two layers of PVC inside and out with a corrugated rib in between, almost a waffling, and that was injected with cement. It was a rigid pipe. It was a 1960s version of, you know, the classic graduate comment of, it's all about plastic.
And just, I'm just trying to inform the people in Wilson, because maybe some of them don't really have a clue what's going on over there, but what happened was is this cement from this pipe, and I'm guessing it's the lie in the cement, actually made the pipe brittle.
Yes.
Didn't make it stronger.
Just shatters.
So, it just shatters. I mean, I have a piece, I can show it, I have a piece of it, I carry around when I'm over there, like, every day. But it, it is, it's ridiculous, it's crazy how it works. But then I've also have done a little bit of homework, and I've actually relied on some of our, our, our past elected officials. And at some point, somewhere back in that Wilson area, there was quicksand. And I've actually, and it's even been reported, as I've talked to other people who've actually seen it not that long ago, to where they would put a piece of pipe in the ground, and the next day, it'd have a giant belly in it.
That's what I understand as well. This, this area has been repaired two, three, four times. Now, if you saw the recent repair, we've got a nice, there's a fabric involved. Did you happen to see it this weekend at all?
I did not, I'm sorry.
Okay, they have, they have fabric under the pipe. I'm very much pleased with what was done this weekend. They got in there Friday and Saturday, got that pipe fixed. We still got to put sod, we still got to do fencing, there's still some work to do, but the pipe's working.
So, what, my, my point being is that, you know, the, not politicizing this in any way, but the past administration has been so criticized for spending a half a million dollars back there trying to fix that hole that you literally could fit a school bus in. And, and now you see, now we, we are learning, because I want to understand, because I know in the upcoming election, I'm going to get questioned on this, why did y'all deficit spend to fix that hole? And I, and I want to know why. And this was a, a great opportunity, you know, to, to, to get back there and learn and understand and, 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 and why. And maybe, you know, it, it's, it's an understanding to get people out there to, to learn what was going on back then. Because it was terrible back then, I mean, what we got going on now, just terrible workmanship. But back then, we had a sinkhole that would fit a school bus.
In the middle of the street.
It was terrible. It was behind, it was kind of on the street behind somebody's house.
Yeah, right there on Radford, by understanding.
And we also discovered that there was an issue with the Larcella ditch.
Well, we also did work at the cul-de-sac area back in the corner between Norton and Soniat and Wilson. In that back corner, we had a section of pipe that had previously, had previously been fixed. It had been slip lined. It was a twelve-inch pipe that had a ten-inch pipe put inside of it, the common practice, but that had sagged. It, the Larcella ditch had a, had a leak in it, and it was losing dirt. We're still working on that one. We're still working with Jefferson Parry.
And that's the reason for the fabric to stop the sag?
Correct. It helps stop the sag. It contains, it contains your base, you know, that's the same reason we do it on the streets. Keeps the base from getting compressed into the dirt that's underneath.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. If you got any questions, if you get any complaints, please get them. I know you'll get them, I know, because that's who they should call. But, you know, I need to find out so we can get them fixed, you know? Even if, even if the contractor doesn't fix it, we'll get it fixed.
So, even if you get a phone call or an email, forward it to me, and we'll make sure that everyone at the city gets it. Okay? So, we need day, time, address, information, contact information, et cetera.
We do, we do call, I do call them, I do talk to them, you know? My, my cell phone number's on my email.
And the electric pole was just a point of contention that was.
Something I learned more about electrical poles.
It was a big point of contention.
Is it an AT&amp;T pole or is it an Entergy pole? That's the first thing you have to find out. And there's two different, two different ones. There were two guide wires on that pole behind his house. One of them was AT&amp;T, one of them was Entergy. And the AT&amp;T wouldn't take the Entergy guide wire down. So, it's, now you got to coordinate two utilities on a similar, on the same pole.
I'd like to point out that Stewart Consulting, Calvin, you were there nonstop. Every single resident knows you by your first name. They know you when they see, if they see you in Winn-Dixie, they're going to know you. Edwin and the entire team. Also, I know Bobby's been out there to help with these issues as well. So, I know that the work that was done on the weekend, Calvin came in, he was there. If he had to sleep on the job, you know, sleep there and put a tent up, he would have. But I wanted to thank you because you really did go above and beyond, and we appreciate it.
It's, it's been too long in that intersection, that particular location. It needed to get done, and I'm glad we got a contractor that was willing to.
And the city does have rights, so we will be working with the city attorney. Thank you very much. Darlene Schwartz, community liaison.
Good evening, council, mayor, and citizens. How you doing? Couple announcements. Tax sale for unpaid property taxes will be coming up on July 18th. So, if you have unpaid property taxes, please try to get this tended to as soon as possible. July 13th will be the last day that credit card payments will be accepted. So, July 18th is on a Wednesday, July 13th is the Friday before. So, please, please try to avoid tax sale on your property. Quick reminder, as everyone knows, school is out, and we have a lot of kids running the streets, riding bikes, playing ball. Please be careful driving, of course, and also keep an eye on your kids. I just have a habit of when I see little ones running around, how far away a responsible adult is. So, let's try to keep an eye on, on our kids, grandkids, and make sure they're safe during this summer vacation. Hurricane season, I'm not going to beat a dead horse. We had a representative talk about that last month. Just get your affairs in order and be vigilant. We've had a couple of small systems in the Gulf already, so hopefully that's not an indicator that we'll have a real active season, but it could be. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. You're welcome. Last but not least, I have a special guest tonight that I would like to invite up. Young lady's name is Lakin Morgavio. Lakin is from St. Matthew's School. And as most everyone knows, we get to do the HOPE program, Harahan Officers Providing Education during the school year. We cover faith Lutheran, St. Rita, Harahan Elementary, and St. Matthew's. Basically, it's our version of the anti-drug, alcohol, smoking, anything that's bad, ugly, and that you're going to be faced with as you become an adult. And so, we do this program at no cost to the city, I always say. It's privately funded, and I get to go to the schools and talk to the students, mostly fifth and sixth graders. Lakin was one of our first-place essay winners at the end of it all, and she's been brave enough to come share her essay with us tonight. And so, I hope y'all give her a warm welcome and listen to what she has to say.
HOPE stands for Harahan Officers Providing Education. I think this program is the best because it will set me on the right path. All the stories I've heard have let me know what can actually happen when you drink too much alcohol, take drugs, or smoke cigarettes. After hearing all of the things that people do while drinking alcohol or taking drugs, it has made me aware of how dangerous they can be. Alcohol is dangerous in many ways because if you have too much, you start to do crazy things. You cannot walk straight so you could miss a curb and fall in the street and possibly be killed. It is especially dangerous if you drive while intoxicated because you can't see straight, and it slows your reaction time down. Drunk driving has led to many, many deaths in our country. Younger people should not drink alcohol because it affects their bodies faster and harms their life. Smoking cigarettes is another bad habit that is addictive. Smoking cigarettes can lead to lung cancer, which can kill you. It also harms other people because of secondhand smoke. More people actually die from secondhand smoke versus the smokers themselves. People should consider the lives of others when they think about smoking cigarettes. There are many types of drugs in our world, such as synthetic, over-the-counter, prescription, and illegal. Drugs are a huge problem in our world today. They are very, very dangerous and very addictive. They can cause you to hallucinate and go crazy and can lead to suicide. People who sell drugs live in horrible conditions, and the drugs that they sell may contain other chemicals that can seriously harm you. I have learned so much from the HOPE program. Learning about all the dangers of alcohol and drugs and smoking have really made me aware of what can actually happen when you do them. I will try to be strong and make good choices so that I don't ruin my life. And I will also try to keep my friends on the right path. I am thankful for the Harahan officer that has taken the time to teach me the dangers of drugs, alcohol, and smoking so that I can make good choices.
I think everyone can see why she won first place, and we have a future newscaster in our midst. It sounds like great diction, pronunciation, and delivery. It was fabulous, and thank you for being here. We're very proud to have you.
And now you see why I enjoy doing the program so much with, with our police department and, and help from the ladies at, at the city. So, thanks a lot, really appreciate it, good job. See y'all next month.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief?
Good evening, mayor, council, viewing public. Tim Walker, Harahan Police Chief. For the record, first want to talk about the minutes. I was reviewing the minutes of the May 17th meeting, and I'd made some comments about, I've been having a problem getting financial reports for some period of time, probably close to a year and a half now. And in the minutes, it says, "Chief's comments." He continues to complain about the financials in order. But when you look at the mayor's comments during the minutes, they almost verbatim. At the end, I said, "We didn't have my, my report for April because our records clerk had a illness in the family, and it says the clerk was out ill, that there wasn't." I would hope that y'all review the minutes before they accept it tonight. Secondly, I'd ask the council to amend the agenda to place Resolution 2018-8 up for adoption.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda, moving proposed Resolution Number 2018-8 to next under, right in here into special presentations.
Yeah, I had asked Nicole to put this resolution, this ordinance together. This is the ordinance.
Resolution.
Proposed Resolution. Proposed Resolution Number 2018-8.
To move it right after special presentation? Or right now?
Right now.
He wants to.
It's on the agenda.
Second resolution under resolutions?
Yeah, it's on there.
He wants to move it up.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to move it up to now.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Baudier to move Resolution 2018-8 to, up in the agenda to right now. Seconded by Councilman Johnston. All those in favor?
Yay.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. Motion passes.
The following resolution was offered by Councilman Baudier. A resolution authorizing Chief Tim Walker to enter into a professional services agreement for and on behalf of the City of Harahan, Harahan Police Department in Harahan, Louisiana, with Attorney Stephen M. Pettit, Jr., to represent the Harahan Police Department in legal matters relating to the duties of the offices, offices as requested by the chief of police for the year 2018.
Anyone wishing to speak to this resolution can come up and speak to the resolution. If no one wishes, we will have no further public input. Council discussion?
Do you have any discussion on the street?
Do we have a motion to, can I have a motion to proceed with the vote? I'm so sorry. I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Wheeler. All those in favor of the resolution?
Yay.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
We have three yays, one abstention. Resolution passes.
This time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Steve Pettit, the attorney that I've hired to represent the Harahan Police Department.
Good evening, my name is Stephen Pettit. I'm an attorney, I've, I've lived in, in the area for pretty much all my life. I am a former Harahan Police Department police officer. So, the department holds a special place. I mean, anytime I get to help the police, it, it, it does, it does good by me. A few months ago, I was contacted by the chief of police saying he had some problems. And it came in, and we talked about a lot of different things, and they revolved around many things that involved the budget and, and access to records and things like that. I, I viewed many past council meetings, and after I looked at it, I came to a conclusion that, and I'm trying to say this as nice as I can, it was a severe lack of grasp of the law as it applies to budgets and, and the Larson Act. And, and it just wasn't going right. And, and I had seen, anybody who come to these meetings know that this is, this has been beat on over and over and over again. So, an injunction and some other things were filed in court, and a hearing was had. And the, the hearing on the injunction was to prohibit the mayor from spending money that the council had budgeted to the police department without the request or knowledge or authority of the police chief. Now, I, I went in with a stack of, of law, probably an inch and a half thick, and, and it was a crystal clear issue to me. It, it should, it should have never been in court. It's a complete waste of Harahan taxpayer money. But we did, and we won. I mean, we were successful and approved in the pudding. I mean, the judge agreed with us, and we touched on a few things. And one of those is Harahan Ordinance 1839, which is the access to INCODE, which is your city's software, accounting software. And, and to be very clear, what, what the police department is looking for and what the council authorized through that ordinance is just to be able to look at the money that comes into the city, how it moves around within the city, and how it goes out of the city. You know, but nobody wants to touch any money, nobody wants to be able to spend any money. Nobody wants to be able to, to, to change things inside of the software. You just want to be able to look at it. And that's anything that anybody in this room can go in and demand to look at any day of the week. That's black and white in the law. And for some reason, it, it is still being denied, and it befalls me, I can't understand it. The judge touched on it, the judge kind of told everybody where he was going and was still here. I, I reached out to the city attorney multiple times, asking him to address it. I got no response. So, once again, the only way to handle it was to amend our lawsuit and ask for that access. That, that is still out there. So, if you want to pay attention, you, that, that is still out there. The access to INCODE has now been asked for in a legal proceeding by the police chief, and, and it is, it is going to be heard sooner than later in front of the court. And, and what I'm finding is, is the city just seems to be picking its, its battles pretty poorly. And I'm excited that just this week, I signed a lease on Hickory to move my office to Hickory. So, I picked up my occupational license application today. So, come July 1st, this is my tax money as well as all of y'all's. And it's being spent very unwisely. And, and I just think whoever is giving the advice needs to really reconsider their calling in life, and whoever is accepting this advice really needs to reconsider who they accept advice from. Because the proof is in the pudding. The city keeps going to court, and the city keeps losing. They lost an employment case recently, they lost a woods case recently, they lost this case recently. We're picking battles that, that are just not, not wise battles. And all this stuff costs money. So, I, I would hope that the city would reevaluate its position on everything we have in front of the court, stop wasting money because it's unnecessary. And, and I'm here, the police chief has made it very clear that all. The police chief has made it very clear that all this is about transparency. We are willing to meet with anybody at any time to discuss these matters. We, if the interest is there, we'll even hold a town hall. We'll do whatever y'all want. The chief wants to be as open as possible. I'll let him speak to all of that. But I am here. Anybody can call the chief. He will pass along my number and we will answer any questions that we have. And we will stay the course. If we can't work this out in here between everybody, it'll be answered in court. And that's what we intend to do. And we've won so far and we're confident we'll keep winning. So, hopefully, we don't have to fight any more battles. And that remains to be seen, so.
Mr. Pettit, I have a question for you.
Sure.
You're telling me that we're fighting this in court and that, is Mr. Bures saying... So, if Mr. Bures is representing the mayor, saying that the chief should not have ENCODE access, would he also be saying that he does not think the chief should have ENCODE access?
I don't want to speak for Mr. Bures.
Well, I'm going to speak for him.
Well...
Because I distinctly remember at this meeting, at a council meeting, it's got to be on TV somewhere. I'm going to have to go look this one up. That he said, "Just give the police chief access." And now he's actually fighting a case against the police chief to not give him access.
Well, let me...
What is that?
Well, let me say this. Mr. Bures is not here.
It's like a maniac on a laptop.
And I don't want to... I don't want to address anything with Mr. Bures when he's not here. I'll just... It's a public record, so I'm not bringing... I filed a motion to disqualify him from the case. That motion remains to be seen. There was a conference with the judge. I don't know if there has been a resolution outside of court yet. But we will see what that says. But I can't speak for Mr. Bures and what he says. I just, it's not my place.
You know what amazes me is that this council is constantly being accused of and called the block of four. The block of four blocks the mayor and everything. First of all, wouldn't this be a transparency issue?
Well, I mean, I think it's a crystal...
Number two, if...
Oh, sorry.
Number two, this is even, this one, if I'm in the mayor's shoes and I'm the mayor, would I not want everybody to see it? Because wouldn't you be in some kind of working environment to where if I made a mistake, somebody else would catch it? That's common sense.
Well, I can say this. The money that comes into a government and goes out of a government and how it's spent is the ultimate public record. I mean, that's the basis for public records law. I mean, everybody is entitled to know and should be able to know where their money goes. So, the access to ENCODE, the information that's being requested, that's nothing more than anybody should be able to come in and see at pretty much any time. I mean, the Larson Act says people can walk in at any time during regular hours and demand to see the books. Now, in the old days, the books are now computerized, but that's what it's saying. They can come in and see where the money's going. So, again, I really don't understand this resistance.
So, let me clarify from a council, from a council point of view, the way I see it. For the past year, year and a half, this chief has asked for access to read his own budget. So, how do you know where you're at on your own checkbook when you don't know what your own budget is? He's wasted entire, he's wasted your time, he's wasted our time, he's wasted Mr. Bures' time, he's wasted Mrs. Lulu's time while she was here because she was billing. We finally write a law to give this man access, and now we're in court not once, but twice. This is just a gross misappropriation of funds.
Well, let me...
Citizenship, you're up in arms.
If I could say this, I don't think it's the chief who's wasting your money.
No, it's not the chief.
The chief won.
Yeah, he's just asking for one thing that was stripped away from him in minutes, but it's a year and someone, and I don't even know, tens of thousands of dollars to get it back, which is actually public information.
It's a lot. It's a lot. Again, I can't say I understand the positions that are being taken. My opinion is that there is just a fundamental lack of grasp of the law. And I think the outcome in court shows that. So, again, the proof is in the pudding. And I think the police chief will continue to win. And it's unnecessary. It's truly unnecessary. And from a council's position, you know, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I watched a lot of council meeting. I'm familiar with a lot of stuff. There's a lot of things that haven't been addressed that really could be addressed. The city, this council truly needs, in my opinion, an attorney to represent their interests. I don't think that's happening properly. I think multiple things are going wrong with the budget. Your city clerk, who is by definition the auditor, doesn't have that. She's the checks and balances within the city. She doesn't have that position anymore that was taken. You've got people working without contracts. You've got people working, getting compensated above the contract number. You have, you just, you have, we could go on forever with the things that need to be addressed. They just need to be addressed. But that's the council's prerogative. The chief made his decision. He hired me. We brought it to court, which is the proper place to address these type of issues. And we've been successful so far, and we think that's the way it's going to continue.
Thank you.
Chief, are you finished with your...
No. Okay, thank you. Let me give you an example, folks, I'm talking about. March the 4th of 2017, I received financials that went through November of 2017. March this year, I didn't have financials for last year. If you had your checkbook at home, you have to keep track of how you have money, whether you can spend to pay your bills. Happened to be in the office on May 13th. It was a Sunday. I made a public records request, which is ridiculous that you have to do that. And I got the financials through December 31st of 2017 in May of this year. The reason I was concerned is our city audit is due at the end of this month, end of June. And we still haven't got all the information that we need. Like I said, we've been to court, asking to have access to read only of the financials, and we haven't received it. Next, mayor's court. Early this year, I made a decision to send our traffic tickets and our minor citations to First Parish Court. I'd asked the mayor, early this year, let's have a meeting and try and resolve some of these issues. June the 6th, the mayor finally agreed to have the meeting. It was a very, very productive meeting. As a result of that, the mayor, myself, my personnel, court personnel, personnel from Justice Parish Sheriff's Office IT Section, and their jail met. We got a lot of solutions. I plan on July 1st of this year, bringing our tickets and citations for summons back to the Harahan Court when applicable. Mayor, we had the meeting a few weeks ago. Our health insurance is going up anywhere from 17% to 22%. And I understand from talking to Mr. Dahl, our city health insurance agent, it's going to be about $25,000 increase for all employees compared to last year?
I don't have the numbers.
It's ballpark.
It's...
Okay. I have one purchase order that I issued last year that I have not executed for $27,000. If the money's there, if we ever get the real budget from last year, if that money's there, I have no problem. The council approves it to put that money towards paying the increase for all city employees, not just police. All city employees that keep the same basic program, they'll have no real increase in their monthly premiums. I don't know if you'd be agreeable to that, if the money's...
We can...
I know, we can get an answer later. Okay. Last month, several residents from across Dickory, an apartment complex about mangoes, came in. Everybody's here tonight. After the council meeting, I met one of my supervisors, went over to the bar. They've done, I'm not taking up for the bar, but they did some extensive work insulating the inside of the building. They're trying to work with us. We've had several complaints since the last meeting. One of my supervisors, actually here tonight, actually went and sat in front of the apartment and did not hear any noticeable sound. Had a decimal meter. Everything is within the legal limits. I'm not sure what the problem is. I'm not saying they're not having a problem, but it doesn't seem to be noise. I think it's more of like a bass. And there's really no way for us to have any kind of equipment to test it. I also have been informed that they did a section with their front door, they made a section with double doors to... People come in, they have to go through two doors before they get in the building to cut down the noise if the music is playing, it's not outside. Since that's been put in, we have not had any noise complaints. Hopefully, that resolves the matter. But again, if you're having a problem, call us. We have no problem going out. And I also want to remember, remind you all, school's out. Watch out for the kids. As I mentioned in one of the last meetings and several other meetings, check your house numbers. It's crucial. When we answer a call for service, whether it's police, fire, EMS, seconds literally count. If your house is not properly identified with your street address, we lose time getting there. Also, remember, lock your cars. We had a vehicle stolen recently, and it appears that the keys were in the car. And we come to the 4th of July. I want y'all to have a happy and safe 4th of July. But also, if fireworks, discharges, illegal in Harahan. Thank you all.
I'd like a motion to amend the agenda to add to Number 4 into special presentations, the mayor. Can I have a motion? I have a motion by Councilman Bennet, seconded by... Can I have a second?
No, second.
I have a second by Councilman Johnston. Thank you. All those in favor?
Yea.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Well, I'll go ahead and just make a comment anyway, because that's the kind of transparency that we have in the City of Harahan. Chief, we are before a prestigious judge, and we will let the judge make decisions, and we will respect what the judge has to say. I've got to tell you, the grandstanding, the political grandstanding, is unbelievable by Councilman Baudier. And some of the comments by Mr. Pettit. If you recall, when we were without a city attorney, it was Councilman Baudier and Mr. Pettit who decided that they could circumvent the law and call for the appointment of the city attorney themselves, which is not the law. So, this axe to grind that Mr. Pettit has and Mr. Baudier and their close friendship to go against the mayor and to make me not look good because he wants to run for mayor is a big smokescreen.
There's no axe to grind, man. This is right and wrong.
So, we will let the judge work out the issues between the chief and I, and we will honor what the judge has to say and give him the respect of his court and his words of wisdom. But, Mr. Pettit, with all due respect, you want the city attorney's job. You tried to circumvent the law to get the city attorney's job. Thank you very much. We will now go to address the council. No.
You can come to address the council.
Come to address the council. It's now open. Let me get my timer on. All right, Ms. Bagby, go on.
Rhonda Bagby, and I want to address two issues. The first is, I understand that last month, it was snuck onto the agenda and it was passed where on October the 20th, you all planned to let a 5K run down Generous, to close down Generous. This is totally unacceptable. First off, you have people that have to go to work. You have elderly people that live on the street that are not in the best of health. And if they needed medical attention, there is no way medical would be able to get to them if the street is closed off. And we all know that it doesn't really matter to Timothy Baudier because he's already made the comment in a previous city council meeting that the elderly and middle-aged women in Harahan are terrorists. We haven't forgotten that. So, we know it doesn't bother you. Well, and then they have people that need to run errands on the weekend. If any of y'all would have had a speck of intelligence, you would know the thing that would make the most sense is to start the race at Colonial Club, at the clubhouse, run the labby where it's not going to interfere with anybody, and hire, rent out a shuttle bus to shuttle back and forth. You need to rethink this and change it. The other thing, you all want to sit up there, you want to get paid for doing what? Creating chaos? You need to all get your priorities in order and go to Jefferson Parish, force the issue, and make them do a new flood survey. Thank you.
I don't know if you have to say who you are again, but my name's Stephen Pettit. I just want to address the factual incorrect, factually incorrect statement. The council did not try to hire me as the city attorney. The council had budgeted money in whatever year that was for their own legal representation. They tried to hire me as their attorney, not the city attorney, just the council's attorney, which is exactly what this council needs. Okay? So, we got to deal with reality here. We can't just make it up as we go. The fact is, I was not trying to be the city attorney. There was discussions of that, but that was stonewalled. So, to get the actual request by Mr. Baudier was to hire me as the council's attorney. It's a very big distinction. There's no axe to grind. Like I said, and I'll say it till the cows come home, when you bring it to court, everybody's tried to work these things out in here, and they don't get anywhere. You bring it to court, you let it work out, and the proof is in the pudding of this is not a political axe to grind. And I don't mean to echo what he said. He is a friend of mine. I don't want to deny that. It's not a secret. But it is right and wrong. And the court saw that, and they're going to continue to see it. So, just want to clear that up. Thank you.
Andrew K., 7412 Ashbourne. For those who were not here last month, you missed that I asked Ms. Bennet a very specific question. In particular, I asked Ms. Bennet, when did she become aware that the mayor was business partners with the Romelli family? And I was very confused by her response because, sorry, I was very confused by her response because initially, she told me that they were not business partners. And then I could not, and then she would not provide me any more information after the mayor silenced her. So, and her answer was confusing to me because the mayor is indisputably business partners with the Romelli family. And this is something that Ms. Benton has known for a very long time. So, I came back this month in order to give Ms. Benton a chance to revise her answer for all of her constituents. But first, I would like to present some facts so that all of the constituents here are on the same page. To start, I will give a definition of what a business partner is. This comes from BusinessDictionary.com, and this is the only thing I'm going to read off my sheet. And I quote, "A business partner is a person who, along with another person, plays a significant role in owning, managing, or creating a company," end quote. And then the definition had an example that said, "If two best friends start a business together, they would consider themselves business partners." I don't think anyone will argue with basic English. So, with that said, let's examine the mayor's relationship with the Romelli family. So, what we have here is a printout from the Secretary of State and LLC record. We have an active company named Baytown Investments, so an investment company. It was founded in 2009, and it's still active, so it almost hit a decade. And if you look at the agents that are involved and the officers, the registered agent is Raina Romelli. And then the officers are Raina's husband, the mayor's husband, and the mayor herself. And then if we look on the back, we have a condo that was purchased by these same people in the same timeframe in 2009. So, the Romelli family, the mayor and her husband, they have a deed together, they have a mortgage together, they have powers of attorney going back and forth. And then in 2011, there was legal actions related to this condo with the same people involved. So, Ms. Benton, with everything that I just said, is it still your contention that the mayor and the Romellis are not business partners?
I did not say that. I do not have the same memory. My memory...
YouTube has the memory.
I, what I said was that I was not going to answer that. That was disclosed on the mayor's financial disclosure. She never tried to hide it. Because she is in a business relationship with the daughter of Mr. Romelli, does not make her in a business relationship with Mr. Romelli. I think you're misguided on that, and I don't know why you keep beating this drum. It's not anything she ever tried to hide. There are other things that have been hidden by members of this council that are much more egregious, that if you knew about, I doubt that you would do anything about that the way you have gone after the mayor on this issue.
Time's up.
Oh, that was convenient. Should I please get an extension? At least to answer.
I have a motion by Councilman Baudier for two more minutes, seconded by Councilman Johnston. All those in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? Opposed, nay. Opposed, nay. And I think it's a motion I get to say nay. So, I'm going to...
It's three to one.
Oh, then you can have two more minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I will work in forward order. I never said that the... First off, thank you for answering this time. And you did say no, and we can go to YouTube about it. Second, I never said it was illegal. I believe the mayor is unethical. I believe she was non-transparent in how she awarded the contract to the family... non-transparent in how she awarded the contract to the family of one of her business partners for a decade, and I also believe, as I've talked to many people around the city, that you were seen as a part of this. You've enabled it the entire time, you defend her as you're doing now, and you've done nothing, it's the biggest contract in the city, worth millions of dollars, and it was given directly to the father of the mayor's business partner. So if you consider that ethical, if you consider the only way, the first time either of you have either addressed it is now, years later, if that's your version of transparent and ethical government, then please run on that in November, because I don't think the rest of the city agrees with me. You also personally attacked me by saying, if I had dirt on the other council members, I wouldn't release it. That's ridiculous, I would release anything, and if you-
I'll give it to you, and we'll see what happens.
Okay, give me verified information, and we'll see where it goes. I also wonder why you haven't released it, if it is your own city, and affecting your own constituents. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Clay Cangelosi, for the ones that don't know me.
Hi, Mr. Cangelosi.
How you doing? I actually served the honor of serving with, um, Ms. Tina on the Council on Aging Committee, and we're on the same board, and got to speak with Mr. Baudier about what, what I'm here to address today. On July 21st, I've actually decided to do a, my second annual first responder ball gala, where we raise money for our first responders, which, before I go any further, we have two of them in a room, and I think they deserve a big applaud, because these guys put their life on the line every single day.
And I was saying, if it wasn't for first responders, I'd, my cousin wouldn't have-
Exactly.
Made it.
And, and so, you know, why, why am I doing this? A lot of people ask, and, you know, some young guy coming up. I'll tell you a little bit background of myself, uh, I've been here in Jefferson Parish, Councilman Johnson knows me very well from the council meetings, um, I'm very outspoken in this parish, but I'm ve- I have a passion for this parish. I love this parish, I love our seniors. Every year, I do a big Christmas banquet where we feed three, 400 seniors, uh, on the West Bank. This year, uh, we, was our first time doing it out, and opened it up to all the parish. And last year, when I did this event, uh, you know, our police officers, our firefighters, our, our first responders, period, are, you know, being put down, they're, they're being shot, killed. Michael Louvier, dear friend of mine, um, I, my brother, my brother, my friend was his brother, best friend, and we, you know, that, that just took, hit home. And, of course, what happened with Congressman Steve Scalise, and I said, you know what, this year, instead of doing something for me, because my birthday's on July 20th, I want to do something for our first responders. Last year, we had some learning errors, some growing, we didn't raise money, I spent more than we brought in. And we didn't get to raise money. This year, we're going to change all that. I've asked people to come in and help me, and, you know, make some better judgments on doing things. It's a learning block, it was our first year, we're, we're hoping that this is something that can be big, and grow, and continue to grow. And so, we decided to do this here, I've reached out to members of Jefferson Parish, which got no response, um, the parish president, the sheriff, and really didn't get a big response from them, so I came out, and I decided to do it here in the city of Harahan, which, being that we're doing it here in the city of Harahan, I think 90% of the money, I've committed some to Gretna, uh, because they did participate with us last year, and we want to donate, uh, to the city of West We Go, in the name of Michael Louvier. So, you know, that's just something that I, I feel that, but the rest of the money will stay here in this parish that we raised. I, I asked, um-
Can I have a motion for, for two more minutes? I have a motion by Councilman Wheeler, seconded by Councilman Johnston, all those in favor? Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. I'm trying to do the time clock at the same time, I'm so sorry.
No problem. All right, so I've, I've asked, uh, and I said that I was going to ask the council, or anyone here that would be willing to double-check me. I would like to be, make sure the money is going where I say it's going. Um, I'm an open book, I, you know, so if anybody on the council would like to say, hey, I actually, I don't handle the money, there is actually a resident here that's handling it for me, I'm very good friends with them, and I've asked them to control all the money, uh, the night of the event, all the money that's brought in, they're going to write the checks, they're going to-
And Mr. Cangelosi, we can borrow some of the city's internal controls-
Okay.
And you can say this is the procedure, and how it comes in, and how it's documented, so that'll be an extra little plus, that'll be good for you.
That'll work. You know, and just keep everything an open book, that, that way, because there is some questions, you know, I don't know this guy, who's this guy?
Thank you for bringing that up, that's so good.
No problem, so I want to bring it in open air, that, hey, the money is going to go where it says, uh, and, you know, I'm, I'm not here, I'm not a wealthy guy, but I'm not here to get rich off of an event, and that's not what this is about, this is about our first responders, this is not about me, this is not about politics, this is about saying thank you to these officers, to these firefighters, these guys that put their line every single day on the line, and their life, and, you know, hey, there's one day that they may not come home, hope that never happens, anybody in this, in this city, uh, more or less in our parish, again. But, you know, it, it's a risk, we're in a world today, we just don't know. And so, I want to say thank you, I want to let everybody know, it's going to be July 21st, the camp is actually working with me, actually all the council members, I have a few of these left, I'll leave in the back, but it's going to be held at the camp, out in, on Hickory at the end, if you guys don't know where it's at, it's going to be July 21st, the tickets are 25, um, and you can purchase them at the door, or I'm going to have some-
Time again.
Some flyers out.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. No problem.
Okay, Mr. Kidoc, nice to see you.
Thank you. Spike, Richard Kidoc, 43 Berkeley Avenue. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for their thoughts and prayers for my dad. Next, um, the lights for the senior center, um, that the mayor told us we could put up, we're putting LEDs on the front of the building, so the seniors don't fall down. It's dark at night, they fixed a bunch of the lights, but right when you come out the building, it's real dark, they should be installed, uh, I'd say two weeks latest, and also, Adelaide's had just purchased an ice machine, a little bigger one, um, a lot more seniors are coming there, and the other one's not working 100%. So I'd like to thank you, I mean, everybody that brings stuff to the back in the senior center, for the little store back there, and anybody that comes and buys from the little store back there. So, all right, one more thing. When, uh, the city engineer was talking, it reminds me that I haven't heard from any of y'all about the concrete on Anthony Street. He's talking about how they making a list, is my name on that list? Hello?
I'm not aware, I don't think we were provided with a list.
Well, I mean, y'all all voted to do it, the last time I was here, I mean, it's been, what, three months, four months?
That was his driveway.
We're talking about the-
That driveway on Anthony-
No, we're talking about the driveway on Anthony Street, that it was tore up because of the sewer-
You're saying the list that the engineer was talking about, like, of the urgency of jobs?
Right, well, no, I'm, I'm not talking about the urgency, because we know it's not an urgency.
It was pooled up because of sewer issues, and was never fixed.
It was never poured back. Y'all have the print that the city drew up, y'all have estimates, from what I understand.
Right, but you were asking us if we have a list of, like, the address-
Well, I was wondering if I was in that list.
Well, unless I'm, I'm, I don't think I have-
If you have one, you're not.
I can tell you, I was not provided a list.
You know, my life's been pretty messed up, but when he starts talking about cement and sidewalks and all of that, it like brings back, like, hey, the last time I was here, three or four months ago, it was like, we're going to take care of. I haven't heard anything from anybody, and I wanted to jump up and catch him before he went out the door, but he went out of here pretty fast. So, I was going to ask him if he heard about it, or if he knew anything.
So, Mr. Kidoc, if funds, if, if those funds are, how, explain to me, who, who do you think on this council would be there to take care of your driveway? How should that go down? Tell us.
The city tore it up.
All right.
Okay, they asked me not to cover it up, okay?
The city, do you mean this administration tore it up?
This minute, the administration-
Not the council members, but the, the administration.
When was it torn up?
It was tore up right before you took office.
In 2014.
Whenever it was, in fact, Carlo had a file on it, they asked me not to put the concrete-
I have a motion for two more minutes. I have a motion by Councilman Baudier, seconded by Councilman Benton, for two more minutes, all those in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays, motion passed.
I don't want to take too much time up, I would just like somebody to, to do something. I mean, you know, everybody's fighting and all of that, I just want it done, that's all. And if anybody on the council, anybody in the city knows something, that somebody's doing something illegal, y'all have an obligation to take care of that, all of y'all. So I mean, I hear, oh, well, you know, but I mean, whoever's got the information that somebody's doing something illegal, y'all need to take care of that. Whoever, even if the audience knows. And I appreciate it, thank you again for all your thoughts and prayers.
And thank you for, um, what you do at the senior center.
I appreciate that. Free food, fun Friday tomorrow.
Thank you.
By the way, if any senior doesn't know what that is, once a month, the fourth Friday of the month, unless it falls on a holiday, um, we cook for the seniors, and it's at 1:00. You have to be a member, but it doesn't cost anything for you to go join, you go join, you sign up, you're welcome to come. A lot of seniors do it, and, uh, you're more than welcome, the more the merrier, okay? Thank y'all very much.
Mr. Mylum?
I'm Pat Mylum, nine Aaron Court, uh, mayor, council, citizens. I, uh, was here the first time in about 30 years, last week, uh, last month, complaining about this eyesore I have next door to my house. And I'll put this up, in case any of you didn't see it last time, so you're involved. It's a pretty simple problem, my neighbor tore down a, a garage without a permit, it's been there for two years, I asked the mayor two years ago, she didn't want to do, have any problems with the neighbor, so nothing's been done. I want to thank Darlene, she just mentioned to me, she's been working with the neighbor, and actually, they came out and fixed it, that's what they did to fix it. So that's no longer considered an attractive nuisance, even though, as you can see by this side, now, there's water involved. So now, the, I guess the squirrels and the raccoons and the mosquitoes have a swimming pond, so they can swim in, it's going to cause more disease, West Nile virus, all those kinds of things. I don't think this is the kind of city we want to live in, I don't think this is the kind of support I want. Certainly, if somebody brought a truck with rotten eggs or rotten oysters next to your house, you wouldn't say it's okay just to put a tarp over. Certainly, I think we're trying to be misguided, and make this a new standard, and woe be it for the city and our, and our values and our prices, if this is the answer to junk on some neighbor's property. Thank you.
Mayor, if you can answer one question, was that a city fix? So did the city go out and talk to the neighbor, and that's what the neighbor ended up doing?
The city did go and talk to the neighbor.
Did we follow up since the blue tarp's been used?
Um, I'll, I'd have to go and pull records. If you want to, um, talk to me, to, maybe we can look at it tomorrow.
Darlene told me she brought the bags and helped cover it.
Those are City Hall provided sandbags.
I didn't see the people, Darlene just told me she brought the bags.
She brought the bags.
The city supplied the bags, which to me is a question, it's great, it's nice to be nice neighborly citizens, but I wish everybody, the city would come help me cut my grass, but, uh-
So, the mayor said it was not a city fix, but the city fixed it?
Darlene said she came out, I don't know if she was on copy time-
I just got confused.
Might have been her own time. But it was evidently city bags, and, uh, I just don't think that's an appropriate way to fix it.
City bag, city tarp, the city couldn't have put out there-
I don't know about the tarp.
But they didn't fix it.
That's all I have. So there's rats, roaches, raccoons, everything else, they got a nice little home right now. Thank you.
Mr. Asbile?
Good evening, Jason Asbile, 573 Posey Avenue. I'm just going to, uh, take a quick shift in tone, real quick, and, um, we want to thank the mayor and her recreation department for the changes that were made at Royal Land Playground earlier this month, two weeks after the last meeting, um, the materials were provided, and the mayor's, uh, recreation department put them up really quickly, um, some other fixes were made that weren't, um, part of the donation, and that's later on the agenda, I guess, and we'll, um, I have some more questions on that, but thank you, mayor, appreciate it.
And, Mr. Asbile, thank you for the positive comments, and the, um, the Branch family, and every, uh, the employees, and we've had, this has been basically a year and a half, we've had volunteers from a church organization, who, we've all gone out there and helped scrub up, um, that area, and try and clean it up, and that was like the beginning of, you know, really paying some attention, so I hope your children enjoy.
I just want to clear something up, I did not mean to imply that I think or know of anything that anybody in this council has done that is illegal. I don't think the mayor has done anything unethical or illegal, it, it's, you know, a difference of opinion between me and Mr. Case, and the point I was trying to make is that there, there are things that others have done on the council, or haven't done, by omission, that in my mind, are as, you know, are worse than what he is saying, what he is accusing, alleging the mayor of, but there's nothing, I don't know of anything illegal that anyone on this council has done, so I just want to clear that up.
Thank you, Eric.
Eric Chatelain, 700 Colonial Club Drive. I know a lady came up here earlier, lives on Generous, she commented about the fun run. I mean, the fun run's for the playground, they have a major event going on at the playground, they're going to run down Generous and run back. I'm sure if she has a major medical emergency, we're going to stop the fun run and get her out of her house and wherever they need to go. I can promise you, the police department will do that. I, I didn't get a notice when they came and tore my street up for a month, I mean, they're going to stop the road for two hours, I just think this is totally crazy for somebody to get up here and just attack somebody who's trying to raise money for the city, and do a fun run and get the community involved. If I lived on Generous, I would go outside and set up a water stand, and hand water out to people running down my street. I, I just don't know where she came from. I've been coming here, and she needs to check her front yard, she got a lot of, uh, illegal things going on there, too. They need, um, I've been coming here, um, complaining about a street light in front of my house. The street light works, the trees cover the street light. I've asked that five months in a row. You could go back and look at the meetings. Has anyone here called and asked, can we get Mr. Chatelain's street light fixed? The trees cut? I'm willing to bet money, no, no one here has made that call. I believe the city is the middle person. If I have a sewer problem, I'm calling the city, if I have a water problem, I call the city, I pay city taxes for that privilege. If I have a street light issue, I call the city. I shouldn't call Energy, the city is our middle person, that's what we pay taxes for. If I didn't want that, we didn't need Harahan, we'd go to Jefferson Parish. If I called Jefferson Parish, they respond. At my office, if I have a problem, I call Jefferson Parish, they respond. At my house, I have a problem, I come here five months in a row and ask that question. The same time I was asking for, uh, the city engineer to come here and give us a report, five months in a row, he came today, I appreciate that report. Thank you all.
Hi, Mr. Rain.
John Rain, three Rent Pass, I'll give y'all an update on, uh, some of the things that's going on behind the levee there. My wife and I spoke at the Southeast Louisiana Flood Protection Authority, East Jefferson Levee District Meeting, on June the 14th. Commissioner Herbert Miller has been a very helpful commissioner for the Harahan residents and the city. We thanked the chief executive officer, Derek Baze, for contacting Wood Materials to see when the work on the old hall road along the levee will start. That's them retiring the old hall road that runs along the levee, from Hickory Street to Bailey. Derek emailed us that Stacy at Wood Materials commented, "All work on the front hall road starts on July the 9th. The construction company we use has been on other jobs while we were obtaining surveys and a plan of action to the front hall road." We asked Pierce Wood questions at the May 9th New Concrete Hall Road Ribbon Cutting Ceremony concerning the old hall road along the levee. Pierce let us know they will be grading the old sand hall road and laying out a grass rug. We questioned if all the berms at Hickory, I mean, at Oak Street, and between Chris Law and Rent Pass, and at Bailey, will be closed, and berms and tree curtains to help stop the venturi effect that is affecting the residents, which blows sand between the openings and the trees. Pierce Wood said yes, and they are happy to put anything that will help stop the venturi effect. The residents are looking forward to seeing all work on front hall road start on July the 9th, and we're looking more forward to it being completed. So, uh, we thank all of y'all for your help, but we want y'all to contact the Woods family, and whatever y'all can do, uh- and whatever y'all can do, Sarah and Pierce, and get them moving on this project here. And also, I'd like to say that the Wood Materials court case is a very necessary court case in that it's upholding Harahan's law, that this compost was not back there for five years, and that was settled in this last court case, and something else was brought up, that Pierce Wood, the owner of the company, knew that it was against the ordinance of Harahan because Paul Johnston told him before he brought it back there. So this is a very definite thing, that this needs to be upheld in the court, and we want to invite everybody to go when it comes around again, I think it's gonna be October, November this year, in the appeals court, and we need everybody to show up that can, and especially our representatives here. So thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
And I'd like to just thank the Reims. They saw this as a privilege, I think. They went and brought the city check to do our filing for our court fees, and thank you very much. I think that was a good spirit.
Well, thank you, because, you know, we called and they said that, to get, you know, that the money wasn't there, so we let, you know, mayor.
It was like within a...
And the next morning, we had a check and we went and delivered it, so it's rolling, the balls are rolling, so we're very happy about that. I hope I don't go over my speech now, but...
Go ahead.
The attorney, Steve Pettit is his name, and I told him, I thought he was gonna stay in here while I said this, but, okay, so out of no disrespect to Mr. Pettit at all, I think that his statement was sort of like we lost on the Wood Materials versus City Harahan. We did not lose. We won on the five-year prescription, and the five-year prescription is, was clear on the full trial, and, thank you, Paul, and everybody who came, and she ruled on a three-year prescription. A three-year prescription is that we're an instrumentality of Jefferson Parish and we are not an instrumentality of Jefferson Parish. So in that case, I'd like to say that the city had victory. And so that was great, that five-year was all that we were trying to get over. The three-year is just a matter of time.
It's the next phase.
So...
And also, it wasn't an unnecessary lawsuit, as Mr. Pettit claimed.
It was a very much needed lawsuit that we've been trying to have for three years, and, you know, the mayor cited them, that stopped the clock, and the five years was met about four or five months before, so the good Lord brought us here in enough time and to address it, and it was a hard run, but it's won. It's won, the instrumentality, we are not. We have a court, see, right here. So I will move on to my speech.
If we're an instrumentality, then we're owed a lot of money from the parish.
We're not, we know that, and Wood knows it too, so he needs to, he needs to do something about it, you know, so I don't want to dampen what the good he's doing, so I'm gonna go on and say something really good, because they're, they are, they built a concrete road, they now gonna be doing this on July the ninth of all this stuff. It was really nice that they asked us to cut the ribbon with them, caught us by surprise. We didn't know that was gonna happen, and so, you know, some good things are happening, so we're very happy about that. But that margin compost, no, 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 move it to the other side. That's not for the residents, they don't deserve it down there. So let me go on, I'm sorry. Okay, "In the May thirteenth Advocate article, Sarah Woodham made comments to close off the open berms it formerly used that faced the nearby residence, and that the company will grade the dirt road along the levee and plant grass on it. Sarah said the road along the river is about a thousand feet further away from the nearby homes than the dirt road along the levee that the company previously used. The purpose of the concrete hall road along the river is to be further from the residents. In order for it to be about a thousand feet further away from the nearby homes, all dump trucks would need to enter and exit the sand pits directly from the concrete hall road." When sand pit was previously being used...
Can I have a motion for more time?
Thank you.
Motion.
I have a motion for two more minutes.
Three.
What?
Three.
For three more minutes by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Bodie, all those in favor? Any opposed? We have four yeas, zero nays, motion passes.
Thank you, I really did have this at two minutes, I really did. Okay, sorry. Okay, so when sand pit three was previously being used, the dump trucks were entering and exiting the sand pit directly from the concrete hall road. That's great, that's what they need to do. That is good because the dump trucks immediately enter the sand pit, go slower, and will eventually get farther from the residents and eventually go lower down in the pit. So that is the proper way to do it, that's what they're supposed to be doing. So what has happened is, sand pit four recently was being used, it's not being used right now, but it's recently been used, and the dump trucks were exiting the cement hall road, they were driving between pit three and four towards the levee, not far from the levee, they were turning into the sand pit. And so that didn't make any sense because the trucks were not in the pit, they were constantly going up and down this road, causing more sand, and never lowering or furthering away. So this caused more airborne sand to the community. Wood Materials has recently stopped using sand pit four and has changed back to pit three and entering and exiting directly off the concrete hall road. So they stopped four, they didn't empty it, they went back to three, it still has some in it, and now they're going directly into the pit. So that is good. Okay, before using sand pit four, again, Wood Materials needs to change the entrance of sand pit four to come directly off the new concrete hall road into the sand pits like they have done and are doing in sand pit three now. So what you do is you move that, it's not hard for Pierce, he said those things aren't hard, move it to where you go in, don't come between pit three and four, come into the pit and handle all your work right there. We are asking the mayor and the council to talk to Pierce Wood and Sarah about entering and exiting all sand pits directly from the new concrete hall road along the river. I know that we talked to, at the East Jefferson Levee District Meeting, we talked to Derrick, and Derrick was, said that he was gonna talk to him, we asked him, could you talk to him and tell him he has to go straightly, that's what you got the road for, to go straight into the pit, not to go down the sand and middling, come up. So he said that he was, so perhaps he did, and that's why maybe Pierce stopped doing it and went back to pit three. So we appreciate that he did that, but we hope that when it does get resumed, that he won't come between pit three and four, right close to the levee, that he'll go directly into that pit. And if he does that, that's gonna really help the residents a lot, just enter every pit directly from the road and then go back out through the road. Does everybody understand? Okay, I sometimes make things complicated. Thank you for the extra time, too.
Thank you. Hello, Ms. May Jean.
May Jean Casnave, forty-six Oak Avenue, Harahan, Louisiana. At the last council meeting, I got so fed up with the nasty accusations and attitude from the council and the audience that I got up and left. Unfounded accusations have no place at city meetings. If you really wanted to use Robert's Rules of Order, perhaps you should read them. There is not supposed to be multiple people talking over each other to make their point. A public meeting is supposed to be done in an orderly fashion. City business should take precedent over petty squabbles. If any of you four were really interested in providing good government, you would have participated on the committee to select our new garbage contractor, but you didn't. You let it play out, and then you griped about the selection, and you are still griping to this day, despite the fact that Romelli is doing a great job and saves the city money over and above what the city paid the last contractor. Even Eric Chatelain and Tommy Buddy said they have no problems with Romelli. Recycling is a different matter. I resent that I was forced to pay for recycling illegally since there was no ordinance requiring the fee. I don't recycle and I don't want to pay for it. If residents want recycling, let them hire a private contractor to pay for it. And let's not forget, according to the newspaper, the citizens paid twice the amount of recycling that the rest of the parish paid because recycling was not put up for bids. When the new garbage contractor was written on a per-unit or can basis, the number of garbage cans on the city books was wrong. When an accurate count was made, it was proven that some people had never paid for additional cans, even though the city was paying a contractor for them. Now that an accurate count has been made, all residents are paying for their extra cans.
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Bodie, all those in favor? We have four yeas, zero nays, motion passes.
And additionally, all cans have serial numbers linked to an address to prevent theft or fraud. Considering the city's original cost was wrong, I would suggest that an ordinance to require a new count be done yearly to make sure that the fees for the extra cans are being placed on the tax rolls. The fact is that the city has been subsidizing the garbage contract for many, many years, not just since two thousand and fifteen. That subsidy is less now since the count is now correct, so the city is actually saving money. So to you four on the council, I say, stop your squabbling, since you refused to work with the mayor from day one, acknowledge that she has improved the way the city is doing business and is making sure that everything is done correctly and legally. Stop making rude comments instead of doing your job as councilman and helping her. Thank you.
May I like to respond to Ms. May Jean? Ms. May Jean, I just want to state for the record, when the mayor invited this council to partake in the judging of the contract, I wrote to the mayor and all the council members that I said, I don't think any elected official should sit on the committee that decides who gets the biggest contract in the city of Harahan. So I did respond, but that was my reasoning. So I know people said that we refused, I guess maybe decline, refuse could be the same thing, but that was my reasoning why, because let's say I'm the second cousin twice removed from Mr. Romelli, and I'm on the committee that decides. People could say there could be some correlation, correct? So I just want, so I did respond back to the mayor's request, and all I just said was, I don't think, I was declining to be on the committee because I don't think any elected official should be on that committee.
Same.
And that was my opinion, so I just want, just want you to understand.
Right, you all didn't refuse, I was at that meeting.
There was no meeting, ma'am, that was an email that I responded to the mayor when she asked us.
And I was about to say she asked you all to participate, and you all refused.
And I had already mentioned to her, that's the reason why I refused, because I don't think any elected official should have been on there.
Well, I think that is part of your job, to sit on the council, to help to make a decision, to do a better contract for the city with anybody.
Mayor, ma'am, the council, the committee that was set to award the contract was not all the council members. I think the committee only consisted of three people, if I'm not mistaken, and she invited us if we wanted to be a part of it. She did a hundred percent. And my response to it was, I don't think any elected official should be on there, and that's my opinion, I'm entitled to it, and I don't think I did anything wrong by rejecting her opportunity to...
You're lying of taking this to the office.
Well, and that's, well, ma'am, and I respect yours, but you need to respect ours, too.
We're arguing? And, and, and...
Well, I respect your, ma'am, I don't want, I respect yours, but I need you to, you should respect ours, too.
I do believe in the laws enacted, actually says that the mayor seeks and qualifies all contracts coming into the city, the council ratifies it, and then the mayor enacts that contract, and I believe that's how the laws enacted is read, so what we did was a perfect protocol, and I do agree with you as well. The mayor just accused me of political grandstanding, and just when I'm sitting up there, it made me think of this old saying, it goes, people in glass houses shouldn't throw stones. I want to bring up a little, we're gonna talk about Colonial because it's gonna become a real hot topic, and I think a lot of stuff needs to be clarified about it. In a January meeting, I'm sorry, the December meeting, I introduced an ordinance to start the progress at Colonial. It was met with a huge rebuttal from the mayor and Councilman Benton, and even Mr. Gilberis. He said the property is currently zoned commercial, not residential. The parcel of that property is bound by the development agreement and it's first commercial, it's one lot of record. Councilman Hewitt said, that's not right, don't mislead everyone. Ms. Beeris said he is not misleading, Mr. Beeris said he is not misleading anyone, he has the development agreement in his hands. The commercial lot is of one lot of record and a subdivision needs to be presented to the zoning board. Mr. DeCody said it doesn't. Mr. Villa Vasso wrote the book here. Mr. Beeris said that this should be done the right way, and this has to go before the planning and zoning board and following proper procedure. So Mr. Beeris is actually speaking against us voting on the property development at Colonial. Councilman Hewitt then says, this is exactly what we want, Hewitt said this would be exactly what went to the zoning board if the property had not been, have not made concessions to, for a certain councilman, meaning Councilman Benton, and surrounding neighbors asked for what we would as the exact submission that went before the zoning board. Mr. Sufferin said that is correct. Councilman Benton said, we did not ask for this. So now that is Councilman Benton and Mr. Beeris saying that they did not ask for this re-sub at Colonial, and basically they're not behind it. The mayor said this isn't too important to ram down our citizens' throats, we shouldn't be doing this on the fly, it's too important. Later on again, she repeats the same thing, the mayor said this is too important to ram down our city's throats, we, with this amendments on the property without being properly advertised. So now the mayor has joined and chimed in saying that, basically she's against it. Councilman Benton said, leave it at a hundred and fifty feet. Councilman Benton said, leaving it at a hundred and fifty feet leaves people vulnerable to change in the future. You can vote on this today, but there will, but we will be suing. Councilman Benton said, that is never in a negotiation to developers, more than what we agreed upon, you have to ask yourself, why? This thinks to the high heavens. Councilman Benton continuing to elaborate on the fact that she's against what is happening at Colonial. Councilman Bodie said, for many years, we have been told to put residential property on this, how does this property, he does not think that the property value will be decreased...
Can I have a motion for more time?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston.
Three more minutes.
Seconded by Councilman Wheeler, all those in favor?
Yeah.
We have three yeas, motion passes.
Okay, I'll read it again. Councilman Bodie has said, for many years, we have been told to put residential on this property. He doesn't think that property values will decrease. There will be houses facing Colonial with sidewalks abutting the highway. I'm reading this from the minutes, but the minutes never reflect, this is where I agree with the chief, sometimes these minutes are a little bit off, never reflect Councilman Benton and Councilman Hewitt slamming their hand on a dais, accusing me of making backdoor deals.
No, Hewitt.
Yeah.
Said Hewitt.
I mean, Councilman Benton and Mayor Moselli accuse me of making backdoor deals, slamming their hands on a dais, it's never in the minutes. When I actually embarked on the journey, I reached out to Councilman Benton to help, and then, what I like, the reason why I'm addressing this is because people on Facebook say, we're not willing or eager to help with, work with Benson, Benton, or Moselli, and I just want to let you know that it's not the truth, you're just being fed a bunch of BS, because I've reached out to help them, and I've actually worked with Mayor Moselli for the first three months until she decided that she didn't want to work with us anymore. So I reached out to Councilman Benton, and I said, hey, listen, I'd like to have a meeting with you and Phil Ramone, and I believe that a leader of this city, whether, you know, Phil, Ramone and I do not agree with each other's ideology or philosophy, it doesn't matter, we should work well with one another, and we should try to do what's right, even if it's against a personal relationship. So, so Ms. Benton, after a conversation about that, we meet with Phil, and then we talk about a plan, we put a plan in place and we know where we're going, and I get a text message from Ms. Phil, she's, Ms. Benton. She says, Tim, I've been thinking a lot about our conversation the other day, I think she brokered this deal on your own. That way you have no conflict with your allies, there is really no need for me to be involved. I know you will do your best to get what is best for the residents, that's all I care about. I put, okay, that's fine, but I would still like for you to be involved. I'd like to have your approval, if that's okay, we can talk next week. Thank you for hearing me out, that is very commendable. And then we go on to, she says, do you remember promising me that you would not vote less, vote yes, unless we were all on board? I put, to Ms. Benton, I am torn for, I am torn because I believe this is right for the city. A two-hundred-and-twenty-five-foot construction, at two-hundred-and-twenty-five feet away from residential construction will begin, and yes, a thirty-five-foot buffer from the highway, and an incredible amount that they gave up. and yes, a 35-foot buffer from the highway, and an incredible amount that they gave up. Phil planted the idea of the residential, and even though he changed his mind, we still believe his first instinct was right. How can you have a mansion and a large lot across the street that would hurt anybody's property value? I don't, I'm just trying to, to think it through, but I'm still thinking about it. Ms. Benton replies, it doesn't benefit the city to have houses there at all. It tops, it may top 10,000 in property taxes. There is a state grants for bike pass, walking pass. Let's make sense of what we got going. I'm going to ask for a political, for an executive courtesy to, let me finish out, so we don't have to get time in this.
Motion to let him finish out.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Wheeler. All those in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have three yays. Any opposed? We have three yays, zero nays.
There are state grants for bike pass. It makes no sense to use Jefferson Highway, it makes no sense to use the River Community Pass. It does not benefit the community more to have houses. The city wants less that you and the council are asking for. Tim, this does not make sense, but that's a great point. Let's look into it. She put, I will not cover that. It will be dedicated funds for a path. Why houses? Please give me a reason. I put, I honestly think it could be a win for Harahan. It puts property into commerce and increased property value. Well, I think you're absolutely wrong. It does not increase property values. I am a retired appraisal and a real estate agent. Frankly, Tim, I don't expect you, I don't expect to believe anything you have to say in the future. You gave your word, and now you aren't keeping it. I put, this was Phil, this is Phil's idea, and I have been honest with you, everything, about everything the whole way through. I said, I wanted to do what was right, and I had that opportunity, and I'm struggling to see how this is not right. We're speaking to Colonial reps now to see if they will go for the 75-foot buffer. She texts it back, awesome. She texts it back, awesome. 75 feet is the right thing to do. It puts the 20, it puts this 20-year battle to bed. For Nito, leaving any acreage, any acre up for possible commercial development down the road does not make neighbors less vulnerable. What if the intention is, is to really put houses, but use this to get the vote, and then come back and ask for commercial where the houses were supposed to go? The city couldn't say no, and those residents would be right back where they started from. Let's put this issue to bed all at once. Stop the smoke and mirrors. This is now the council meeting goes through, the ordinance passes. This is the text message I get that evening. And I wasn't even going to bring this up until I will tell you why this is all coming up. You have no idea what you did. You just unnegotiated a way better deal. They played you good. Good job. Good luck running for mayor. I am retired. I will be knocking on doors, reminding residents of how you wanted city-paid health insurance, and how you underfunded the loan that you made with the DEQ. You underestimated me, my friend. You lied to me. And so, as I was warned by many that you would. I put, thank you for your opinion, I'm sure. However, this would still go the same way, no matter what decision I would have made. She put, not true, Mr. Pro Business. If you run, if you run your business the way you handled this, you will be bankrupt very soon. We were in the driver's seat, and you gave them the farm. You are an idiot. I'll let the residents know what you did. Good job. Don't worry. I put on, I'm so sorry that you feel that way. I'm so sorry that I do not feel the same way as you. We were elected by a city, and our job, I believe, is to do what's best, and we can, than we, that we can do for the entire city. That's the only agenda I have ever had. I've never had, I've never chose to run for election to protect my self-interest, and that's okay if you did. I want to try to make you guys happy, but I'm pretty sure, no matter what way it went, that was, that everything was going to happen. The insults are not necessary. She put, I respect you. You are an idiot, but a luring idiot. Miss type in. Okay, sure, no matter what, you have your opinion, and I have mine, and that's okay. She put, okay, I meant, all right, here you go, here's, she wants to clarify idiot. I meant to say, I respect you. You are an idiot, but a lying idiot. This is your reputation in your community. And this is Councilman Benton. This is after I reached out with the olive branch to work with, and this is what I get back. I know you have, I know you have a rep, but I know, I know what mine is. I don't think you know what yours is. People have said to me, if his lips are moving, he's lying. People who grew up here with you have told me that. I see now that you're, they were telling me the truth. I put, so, so, okay, so we, me and her disagreed. Phil Ramone was in that meeting with us, because Phil, I believe, was at the forefront of not wanting anything developed there, so I reached out to Phil. So I called up Phil. I said, Phil, did we do something wrong? What happened? Ms. Benton is going crazy on me? I have no idea what we did wrong. Please tell me that I did something wrong or right. Phil tells me, hey, you know what? We would love to have the buffer there, but I tell you this, we got residential, and if that was the best thing we could get, we got, I'm fine with it, because I've always preached residential there from day one. Well, you know what I got for him there? I got residential with a 225-foot buffer before it ever touches commercial. That's a sweet deal for him. That's a sweet deal for every one of them residences, and that's a sweet deal for every one of us as community members, because it generates tax dollars. That keeps that property in the commerce. So later on that evening, after I called Phil, I get another text message back. I have to apologize for my harsh words to you. I was furious, obviously. However, I was horribly disappointed that you went against your word. I know words spoken cannot be taken back, but I hope you can accept my sincere apology. I am still upset about the blind side and why JW Colonial, by the blind side, by the way JW Colonial, JW, but I know by now that is how it is going to be. I emailed her back, that, there was no need for your unnecessary remarks and your text message, but I'm fine now. I love my city. That's why I am a councilman, and being talked to like this way is just a part of the par for the course, since Tina has been in office. Because if you pay attention, everybody says how we attacked Tina. Go back on some of the video, how some of Tina's collective group have come to this council meeting, called us stupid, ignorant, we can't write our own ordinances. So pay attention how this really started, because now that it's ending, those people who started it are trying to flip the script, and I'm not going to allow it to happen. I put, you are right. She put, you are right. I put on, she put on there, Tina, it's been, I am not mad at you. I still believe you are a good person, and I will always try to do my best with every situation that arises. She put, you are right. I crossed the line. I wish I could take those words back. I have to work on my temper. Sometimes when you say stuff like that, it's hard to take that back. So I turn on the news the other night. This way it gets really interesting, the way it really starts to go. I'm like, what? Lauren Bell doing an interview with Tina Mocelli on Colonial. I'm trying to think, I wrote this verbatim. Tina Mocelli said, she negotiated with the current developer to ensure that the cousin, current residents maintain, maintain, can't even read my own words, of what their neighbors by turning the, by turning the corner lot along Jefferson Highway and Colonial Club into residential property. That Tina negotiated the deal to turn that corner lot into residential property. But I'm just accused of political grandstanding. That's political grandstanding and just straight out not telling the truth. Residents will be, residents will benefit from the residential. It's a wonderful buffer. The mayor said, this is a good compromise. Well, now, it's a good compromise, because now it's political, but I'm the political grandstander. But it's a good compromise now, but I'm the political grandstander, yet she beat her hand on this dais, yelling at me, telling me how I made backdoor deals. And let me tell you something, it was, I almost sought an attorney and suck, and suck a lawsuit against her for, putting, saying those kind of words, because it's against the law to sit up there and do that. But I want to tell you what's really happened at Colonial, and this is the truth. What happened at Colonial was when I ran 12 years ago for the first time.
Haven't you, you, this is still address the council?
That's fine. Hey, you go ahead, you have yours, I have mine.
No, you voted no for me to be able to address the council.
You got one more thing. Well, we listened, did we give you, you listen to Ms. Maigene? Thank you. Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Oh, we don't want to miss it.
All right, so, 12 years ago when I ran for office, I did everything I could to protect that green space. Lurie LaSella wanted to put, because I am the advocate of the green space. People say, oh, I wanted that property developed. I never wanted that property developed. Lurie LaSella wanted to put a high-rise condo back there and keep that a non-whole executive golf course. You know, the only candidate in that race that supported that plan? This candidate. Four years later comes up, Tony Manzella wants to develop the front 15 acres. Keep the rest in perpetuity. Never develop it, ever. We keep all the rest of the acreage in green space. You know who supported that? Me and Councilman Hewitt, who, she's not even here to defend herself tonight, but Councilman Hewitt's another victim of the mayor and the way people talk to her, and they ought to be ashamed of themselves, because we have fought religiously to keep that green space. So people want to know, people on Facebook want to ask about what I have done, and I can tell you, this is one thing I have done. I have fought for the city. I have done the right thing every time, and I have reached with every single thing I got to keep that green space green. Now it's in a position where it's not green, it's not due to me, but I want to tell you that I fought for it every single day that I had the opportunity to do it. Thank you.
We will now close, address the council and any infomercials at the same time. Approval of the minutes?
Reading of the minutes of the council meeting on May 17.
Do I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Benton. All those in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. Motion passes.
Approval of the minutes of the council meeting on May 17.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? I have a motion by Councilman Benton, seconded by?
Second.
Councilman Johnson. All those in favor?
Nay.
To approve the minutes? Nay or yay? Yay. And those opposed?
Nay.
So.
Three nays, one yay.
Three nays, one, sorry, three yays, one nay. The minutes are not approved, but?
One yay, three nays.
I'm sorry. You're right. Thank you for the clarity. One yay, three nays. Approval is not granted. Madam Clerk, but please still follow state law about filing the minutes and advertising. Communications?
The Board of Adjustments and Appeals did not meet in May, and reading of the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Board on May 2.
Do I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minute?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Benton. All those in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have?
You said you're?
Nay. Three yays, one nay.
Okay, three yays, one nay. All those in favor?
We're talking about with the dispensing?
Dispensing of the reading.
Dispensing, I'm sorry, yay.
Yay.
Okay, we have four yays, zero nays. Motion passes.
Approval of the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Board on May 2.
Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as approved by, and by signature of Vice Chairman Dale Velez?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Benton. All those in favor to accept?
Yeah.
Any disapprove? We have four yay, zero nays. The minutes are approved, or accepted. Resolutions?
Proposed Resolution Number 2018-7. The following resolution was offered unanimously by the council. Be it resolved that the following millages are hereby levied on the 2018 tax rule on all properties subject to taxation by the City of Harahan. The total mileage for 2018, 21.93. The foregoing resolution have, I have to, be it further resolved, and read the whole thing, that the proper administrative officials of the City of Harahan, State of Louisiana, be in there, hereby empowered, authorized, and directed to spread said taxes as herein above set forth upon the assessment rule of said city for the year 2018, and to make the collection of the taxes imposed for and on behalf of the taxing authority according to law, and that the taxes herein levied shall become a permanent lien and privilege on all properties subject to taxation as herein set forth, and collection thereof shall be enforceable in the manner provided by law. The foregoing resolution was read in full. The rule was called on the adoption thereof, and this resolution was adopted by the following votes.
The public hearing is now open. Anybody wishing to address the council on this issue? Public hearing, since no one wishes, we will close the public hearing. Council discussion?
No discussion.
Do I have a motion to move with the vote?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Benton. All those in favor of the resolution? Any opposed? We have four yay, zero nays. Resolution approved.
All right.
Before we get on with the ordinances, I'd like to motion to amend the agenda to add proposed ordinance number 2018-8, which got handed out a little bit ago.
A proposed resolution?
Proposed ordinance.
Proposed ordinance?
2018-8.
Oh, this is?
That's a.
The one about the flooded?
Correct.
Street that we were asked to do?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And that is?
I have a motion to amend the agenda to add proposed ordinance 2018-8.
Second.
By Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Wheeler. All those in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have four yay, zero nays. Amend, agenda is amended.
And that's for?
Ordinance for introduction.
First reading, right.
Yes, sir. We're going to move to ordinances for approval?
Please, yeah.
Alrighty.
I'm just writing, I'll keep it straight.
Proposed ordinance number 2018-4. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Johnson and seconded by Councilman. Who would like to second? Wheeler. This is an ordinance approving the re-subdivision of lots four and five, Square A, Riverside Subdivision, and lots one, two, three, and four, Square A, Jefferson Park Manor Subdivision, City of Harahan, Parish of Jefferson, State of Louisiana, made by Gilbert, Kelly, and Cattori Incorporated, dated April 17, 2018.
The public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak to this?
Eric Chaddeling, 700 Colonial Club Drive. I'm a representative for the property. I was just, do you have any questions, anything I can help answer? Just feel free to ask.
Any questions for the, for Mr. Chaddeling?
At the moment, no.
If there's no one further, do you have any other comments that you would like to have? Okay, we will close the public hearing. Council discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion.
Can I have a motion to proceed with the vote?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Baudier, seconded by Councilman Benton. All those in favor of the proposed ordinance?
Yeah.
Any opposed? Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. Ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
All right.
Proposed ordinance number 2018-5. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Wheeler and seconded by Councilman?
I'll take it.
Johnson. An ordinance to amend ordinance number 1841, the annual budget of revenue and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2018, for the Police Department of the City of Harahan, Louisiana.
The public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to come up and speak? If there's no one wishing to come up and speak, we will now close the public hearing. Counsel discussion?
No discussion. Chief, you have any comments?
Thank Parish Councilman.
Yeah, oh, that's it. Thank Jefferson Parish Councilman Paul Johnson for the money. And that's all.
Do I have a motion to proceed with the vote?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Wheeler. All those in favor of the ordinance?
Yea.
Nays? We have four yays, zero nays. Motion is approved. The ordinance is approved.
All right, proposed ordinance number 2018-6. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Wheeler and seconded by Councilman?
Me.
Johnson. This is an ordinance to amend ordinance number 1841, the annual budget of revenue and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2018, for the Police Department of the City of Harahan, Louisiana.
The public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to come up and speak? If there's no one wishing, we will close the public hearing. Counsel discussion?
No discussion. And Chief, anything? Thank you, Councilman Paul Johnson again. Appreciate it.
Do I have a motion to proceed with the vote?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Benton, seconded by Councilman Johnson. All those in favor of the ordinance?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. Ordinance is approved.
Proposed ordinance number 2018-7. The following ordinance was proposed unanimously by the council. An ordinance amending ordinance number 1841, the annual budget of revenue and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2018, for the Recreation Department Capital Project Fund of the City of Harahan, Louisiana.
The public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to come up and speak?
Jason Asma, 573 Posey Avenue. Just a couple of questions. Is this just putting in the budget what the money that was donated?
Yes.
Okay. And then the extra stuff that for mulch, is all that?
Yes.
How, what was... Can you explain the cost of that and where it was from? And it wasn't from Woods, right?
No.
No mulch from Woods? Okay, okay. And then the actually increased donation, can you explain who that was from? If not, understand that if they don't want their name out there, that's fine. Just curious.
It was the branch family.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you again for coming on. We will now close the public hearing. Counsel discussion?
What was all entailed into $2,600, do you know?
I didn't bring the invoices with me, but the 26 supplemented, the 500 that we received. It had... The mulch was included for sure, the chains, the actual bucket seats, the S hooks. I can't tell you all the mechanical pieces and parts.
And that was... We bought new equipment for out there also, correct, with that money?
That was all new, brand-new pieces?
Right.
That were done.
Right, well, I mean, extras, like I saw a whole bunch of stuff that was put out there and mulched around. All that was brand-new?
That's all.
Equipment, all of it?
Right, that was all within that...
And that was with that 26?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Do I have a motion to proceed with the vote?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Benton. All those in favor of the ordinance?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. Ordinance is approved.
And ordinances for introduction. Proposed ordinance number 2018-8. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman?
I'll take it.
Johnson.
Yep.
It's an ordinance to place a "Do Not En..."
Wait, wait, hold on, what?
I have none.
Oh, that's this.
Oh, yeah.
Title on.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah. It's an ordinance to place a "Do Not Enter When Flooded" sign on West Imperial Drive.
This came as a suggestion that was sent to the city from a resident, and we thought it was a great idea. So, thank you, Councilman, for sponsoring it, and I look forward to it coming up for a vote at next month's council meeting.
And we have no old business. And new business number one, appeals board nomination.
I'm not ready to...
I thought when you discussed, weren't there some emails back and forth that we thought maybe somebody was termed out, but come to find out that they weren't?
That's correct. That's what I thought.
That was...
Pat McDaniel was not termed out?
Right, Pat was...
On the appeals board?
Pat's up till 2020, I believe.
You don't term out. On the planning and zoning board, you do. You can always be up for reappointment on the appeals board, but you can have two terms on the planning and zoning board.
Wasn't it the alternate, alternate?
Alternate position.
It was the alternate, yeah. And who has that alternate right now?
He just reappointed him as an alternate.
We have Guy Lavin and Pat McDaniel.
Well, Pat, Pat was good till 2020, correct? Pat McDaniel, he's, his term goes to 2020?
No, he was, when he was appointed last, he was appointed as an alternate for three years. So, he is up for reappointment.
He is up.
May of 2018.
Okay, so Pat, Pat's all...
Through 18.
So, Pat's an alternate, alternate?
Pat and Guy.
And Guy's alternate?
And the way it works, the next person that comes in will come in as an alternate and bump, you know, Pat or Guy up as a regular position, a five-year term position. And then the first one that comes in behind that will bump them up.
I don't know if that's how it goes for... I'm not quite, not trying to question you, but I guess I am kind of questioning you. That's why I'd like to have the city attorney...
I'm looking at the minutes from the last meeting, and we already nominated Guy?
Right.
For a five-year.
Right.
Oh, it's a three-year?
Also an alternate as well in the roster.
So, it should have been a three-year instead of a five-year.
That's why I was wondering if we could wait till the city attorneys here at next month's meeting, so we can just kind of clarify that. Do you mind if we... We don't have anything on that agenda?
Right, well, Guy was already voted for, so we just got to distinguish whether it's three or five.
Right, I'd like to clarify it. Does that, is that a problem if we put it on for next five? On, and just carry it over? Can I?
Well, I mean, I don't see why we can't nominate Pat to keep his spot also.
Well, if...
You can nominate him this month, appoint him another month. Or can we nominate him and appoint him this month?
But we don't know if it's three or five, is what I'm saying, right?
It's three.
Pat is up for a three.
It is.
Until someone comes in behind.
I'd like to, I'd like to nominate Pat for another three-year.
I'd like to second.
So, we have a nomination for Pat McDaniel's for the alternate position by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Baudier. All those in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed?
Nay.
We have three yays, one nay. Appointment is made.
Through 2021. He'll be up May 2021.
2021, yeah.
Yes, through 2021.
Alrighty. So, that's four. Four, one, all right. And new business number two, Civil Service Board nomination.
Does the council have a nomination for civil service?
He's already been nominated. This is just you all confirming. I mean, he's already on board. This is just you all confirming him. He's already signed all of his paperwork.
You want to get up and talk to the mic?
You all already nominated Mr. Brady at a previous meeting. His paperwork's already been sent to Baton Rouge. This is just you all confirming?
Gotcha.
His nomination.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to proceed with the vote?
Motion.
I have a motion to proceed with the vote by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Benton. All in favor of the nomination?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. Appointment is approved.
Alrighty. And new business number three is Official Journal 2018 to 2019.
Can I have a motion to reappoint the advocate?
Motion.
Journal for the city. I have a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Baudier. All those in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays, and the advocate is renamed as the Official Journal for the city.
Address the council.
We will now go to address the council. Anyone wishing to come and speak?
Stephen Pettit again, and I'm in a different light. I was contacted by Mr. and Mrs. Brett Gidry about the Woodlawn issue. To be very clear, now that a vote is taken on a contract and I represent the chief, I will not take any action against the city. It would, I think it'd be improper. However, I will offer what I've learned in the hopes that this can be reconciled without any more needless litigation. The Gidry's bought two lots on Woodlawn. There are two lots, I believe they're 25-foot front each by 130 deep. They sold one of the lots. So, there's one owner for one lot and one owner from another lot. They came into the city. They all got permits. They both got permits to build, setbacks and everything. The permits were issued. Once the work started, for some reason, there was a work order stopped. The city attorney, Mr. Bures, wrote a letter to the Gidry's, and one of the things I think that stuck out, and I think it's important, and I think it could clear this up pretty easy, is that he said, "For the council to vote on this, it'd be an administrative function." Well, administrative functions probably should be borne by the administration. So, the easy fix to this issue, I mean, it's just, y'all have to do it, but the easy fix to this issue is for the council to amend the zoning ordinance and just give the mayor the right to sign off on the permits on substandard lots. The administration has already approved these lots. I did a public records request back to 2014, and I went through them quick, so can't hold it to me, but I believe that there's at least 10 new constructions on substandard lots in Harahan since 2014. And y'all, y'all know, I never looked this up, but I don't know that any of them came before the council. I think they were just approved. So, treat everybody the same. Let's just, or, you know, consider amending your zoning ordinance. Let the mayor do the administrative functions, which is probably the right place for it to be anyway. The administration has already approved these building plans, so I don't see why they wouldn't build them again. And what'll likely happen is the city won't find itself in more litigation, because the people spent money getting plans done, building foundations, hiring contractors, and one of them's got a loan. So, their argument is that they're getting the interest every day that this sits. So, they're raring to go. I will not be filing a lawsuit, but I'll do anything I can to help not have them file a lawsuit against the city. So, I just wanted to make that statement. Let y'all consider that. It certainly seems like a reasonable thing. It can be done fairly quickly, and hopefully it'll keep y'all out of another lawsuit. Thanks.
Mr. Pettit, I'm sorry. And I know you said you just received them recently, so I don't want to hold you to any accurate numbers. So, you're saying that there were other permits applied for, for substandard lots? Either construction has commenced, or maybe it is even possibly completed by now. And I can tell you, I'm not aware of anything that has come before us.
What I did...
I just, I just want to make, because I'm...
What I did, what I did is, did a public permit, a public, public records request for new construction buildings since 2014. Went back about four years. And I think there was about 60 or 70 of them total. So, I went through. Some of them actually had the dimensions of the lot on the permit. Some I had to cross-reference through JeffNet and the council, and I went and looked at the legal description. And again, it was quick. You can't hold me to 10, but it was, it was more than one and less than 100. I mean, but I think it's about 10. There's two requirements in y'all's code for a standard lot. It's a 60-foot front and a 6,000 square foot total to be a standard lot, so to say. These lots are clearly substandard by the definitions. I don't think anybody could argue that. I also tried to see if these lots have ever been subdivided. I don't, no records were provided saying they ever made it into one lot. It seems clear that it's lots 71 and 72, and they're both 25-foot fronts, which is certainly substandard. But again, there's been at least 10 that I think are under 6,000 square feet, and it's probably more than that that don't have the 60-foot front, but I just kind of focused on the 6,000 square feet issue. So, if those haven't come before the council, that seems to be the way that it's been done, at least for the last four years. So, if you just treat everybody the same, just keep going. The city, I actually agree with the city attorney on this. He said it's an administrative function. Administrative functions should probably lie with the administration, and that makes it easy, you know, I'm sure some people won't be happy, but at least it's consistent. And that way, the city does everything it can to stay out of litigation.
Mr. Pettit, you don't think that the fact that there was at one time a house on those two lots that straddled the mid-property, the separation, and there was a municipal address, a one?
Sure.
Address that has no bearing on this?
I don't think it has any bearing legally, but I can tell you that, and this is in defense of everybody up here, if anybody has a, if anybody's upset about that fact, who they need to really be upset about is whoever approved that demolition permit years ago without making them subdivide that into one lot, okay? My history is, I was in permitting. I ran permitting in Kenner for a little while, and I know you never let anybody build over lot lines. You don't let anybody demolish over lot lines for probably this exact reason. So, if anybody's made it anybody, this, it's misplaced. Nobody up here did anything wrong. But the fact is, I'm not aware, and certainly need to check it out, but I'm not aware of any legal, I'm not aware of anything legally that says if you build over the lot lines, you automatically turn it into one lot, because in the mortgage and conveyance office, it still shows as two lots. It's been two lots probably since the beginning of Harahan. It's close to the levee, so it was probably one of the first lots that was ever done in Harahan. And it's just been that way forever. So, if that is not a practice that the city does, you might want to consider not letting people build over lot lines without subdividing it into one, and not letting them demolish properties over lot lines without consolidating them into one. In this case, there's another thing. It still's only 50-foot front, so it still wouldn't technically fit the city's definition, because the city says you're going to have a 60-foot front?
No, it doesn't.
Yeah, it does. It says both.
This is...
Hold on, that's okay. I can tell you this. And listen, I'm, this is not here to argue. So, I can tell you where I got that from, and if I'm wrong, I could, I could very well be wrong. I'm looking at the letter that Mr. Bures wrote where it refers to Section 5, R1A, Single Family Resident District, Lot Area A, "The minimum width of lots shall be 60 feet at the front property line or at the front building line in case of an irregular-shaped lot, and each lot shall contain a minimum area 6,000 feet." If I'm wrong on that, I could be wrong, but that's where I got that from. So, if I am wrong, I'm wrong on that. Sorry. But that's where it comes from. So, thanks.
Mr. Chaddeling?
Eric Chaddeling, 700 Colonial Club Drive. Well, Mr. Pettit hit me off guard right there. I think the city needs to compensate these guys and leave it as a 50-foot lot. I mean, I had issues where I came in and applied for permits and asked for 30-foot lots, which I had four 30-foot lots, and I was told I could not do that. I had to apply for a re-subdivision and go through the whole ropes, and I did all of that. So, I changed it from 30s to 40s. I had three council members in favor of voting on this, two council members against it, and the mayor publicly stated she'd veto it. So, I pulled the ordinance. So, we did not go through with it. I believe if this passes, I believe we're opening up the doors for a lot of different issues here. I like the people who are doing it. I mean, I think they're nice people and all. I just think this is a mishap. Like Mr. Pettit said, he goes back to the parish offices where they record the mortgages and stuff. I mean, they don't know that it's one lot. You know, they just think it's a 25-foot legal lot, two 25-foot legal lots, which it is. I believe in a previous administration, Mr. Johnson put something in place to where if you go to get your demo permit and you have more than one lot that's non-conforming, they combine them as an administrative resub. This was probably done prior to that ordinance being put in place. I'm not sure when this was done, but I think it's a bad situation for the city. That's all I can say. I don't, I don't know how y'all are going to handle it.
I just want to ask you one question. Didn't you tell me that you were, it was suggested to you by several people in the community when you were trying to do your lots to go and put them in different people's names to circumvent our ordinance about substandard lots?
It was definitely told to me.
Yes.
I don't want to be that guy.
It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a situation that happens quite often in our city, and I think this is one of those situations.
I can't say it was done intentionally or not. I mean, I can't sit here and say that. But also, I got up here to state...
Can I have a motion for more time?
Motion.
By, how much?
Two more minutes.
I have a motion for two more minutes by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Baudier. All those in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? I have four yays, zero nays. Motion.
I know a lot of times, things get talked about at these council meetings. I think there's a fall on deaf ears. Three months ago, I believe, could be less, two months ago, we went in here talking about a John Curtis contract for the playground. I don't think a John Curtis contract's ever been put in place. If it has, I'd love to know about it. The good thing is John Curtis finished their last game today, so I don't think we need to worry about this till next year, but it'd be nice to get put in place, you know? And I'm still confused on, they have access to the playground, the gym, all of this stuff, you know? And we, as the Athletic Association, are trying to raise money for the playground. We can't get keys to the gates, different things like that. We got to go check them out, to where John Curtis has their own keys or something. I mean, they're in there all the time when no one else is there. I just think things like that, just, they just stop here, you know? Do we follow up with this tomorrow, the next day, or the next week? I mean, do we need to hire another person to come in here and write down everything we do so they could follow up on everything in the next few days? I'm just a little confused on it, and I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention. Thank you.
We will now close, address the council. Secretaries report?
Secretary's report for May. Total revenue, $922,186.47.
Chief Walker reports.
Got some questions about, yesterday there was a car chase that originated in Old Jefferson by the sheriff's office, and unfortunately, it came into Harahan, went through a lot of our streets, and then did an 1,800 block of Hickory Avenue. Started out with a stolen car. One subject was arrested. No officers were injured. Also, I want to thank Councilman Paul Johnson. There was two ordinances that we just passed. One was for $125,000 that he donated to the Police Department for equipment, supplies, and services, and another one, $30,000 for a police vehicle. Okay. As mentioned before, our records clerk was out last month due to a family illness, so I have reports of both April and May of 2018. Month of April 2018, calls to service were 621. 12 accidents were handled. Citations were 60 for 96 charges. One funeral escort filed a patrol request. Narcotics arrests were 18 for 26 different charges, 15 felony, 11 misdemeanor. Other arrests were 59, 124 other charges, 14 felony, 82 misdemeanors, two city, and 26 traffic. No murders, no rapes, two robberies, no residential burglaries. two robberies, no residential burglaries, non-residential burglary, none, attempted burglary, none, two motor vehicle thefts, uh, attempted motor vehicle thefts, none, uh, larceny thefts, eight, and five assaults. That's for April of two thousand eighteen. Last month, May of eighteen, we had seven hundred ninety-five calls for service, handled six auto accidents, fifty-five citations issued for ninety-six charges. We had eight patrol requests, eighteen narcotics arrests, twenty-one narcotics charges, eleven of them were felonies, ten misdemeanors. Other arrests were sixty-six for a hundred and fifty-seven different charges, which were eight felonies, ninety-six misdemeanor, four cities, and forty-nine traffic. No murders, no rapes, no robberies, one residential burglary, no non-residential burglary, one attempt burglary, no motor vehicle thefts, no attempted motor vehicle thefts, five larceny thefts, and five assaults. Thank you. Have a happy Fourth of July, and I have a safe one.
Chief, can I ask you, um-
Sure.
Or, or maybe Tracy a favor? You have your stats compiled for two thousand and seventeen? Don't you have a, the total? Can you?
We gave it to you at the end of last year.
I know, and I, I think you might be able to just put your hands on it.
Yeah, we can get it, yeah.
Or, do you mind emailing it to me?
Yeah, we'll get it tomorrow, yeah.
Thank you. I'd, if you could do it tomorrow, it'd be appreciated.
We have it handy, yes.
Chief St. Sears not here, Councilman Hewitt's not here. Councilman Johnson?
I just wanted to wish everybody a safe and happy Fourth of July.
St. Sears right here. Oh, if he, ask him if he has a report. Thank you, there again, volunteerism. Y'all sound very different, too.
As I said, just wanted to wish everybody a safe and happy Fourth of July.
Councilman Bodie?
Just real quick, I wanted to say, um, sorry, sorry for my passion earlier. I'm just tired of people saying that we don't work with this mayor and this county, and, and we don't work with the mayor and sue Ben, uh, because it's not true. I do believe we do. I'm tired of the mayor taking credit for things that she didn't do. I'm tired of every time that I come up here and I say something, the mayor's gotta take a little shot and insult me. I've worked very hard to try to find some kind of resolution for Colonial over the past twelve years. I think I came up with a great plan, and I came up with a plan with three other councilmen. Councilman Hewitt, who stood by this plan forever and ever, from all of the, 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 you know, the, the heat that we took on that, then Councilman Wheeler later got involved, Councilman Johnson, and I finally put the plan to bed with what we think was a great plan for this city. We do, I do work very hard. I work very hard for the city. My interest is always trying to be what's best and what's right. I never do anything for self-interest. And, um, I love this city, and I just want to wish everybody a happy Fourth and a very safe summer.
Councilman Wheeler?
Uh, no report.
Councilman Benton? I'd like to just say thank you that we are ending before midnight, and, um, we can pay the bills. Can I, I'll just- Can you just pay the bills? I was about to pay the bills for you.
Mayor, I'd like to go on record to, to state that, um, and I don't know if we do on the, how we do this, but I want to make sure that Gulf Coast Engineering does not get paid. So, I would like to pay the bills, but I don't want them paid.
Um, I did want to make one, uh, suggestion that, uh, before we do pay the bills, I'd like this council to contemplate, um, that we systematically go through all the parcels and where there are lots with homes on them, that we just go ahead and administratively resub them.
That's the way it should be done.
And that we can work with the city clerk. Um, would we need an ordinance for that?
Yeah, we just can't take somebody's lot and turn them into a-
I believe they already have it, as it was brought up. I believe they already have something.
Well, what happens is, you'll have-
That's on there, that if you have one family that owns, say, two lots of twenty-five, it automatically gets put as a fifty.
Well, what I'm saying is, we have two parcels, but they'll be documented as one lot. So, we can work with the city attorney to see how we can systematically go through it and maybe potentially get a proposed ordinance up. Yeah. Okay, um, exactly. All right. Pay the bills.
The, um, bills paid in May, um, nine hundred thirty-six thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and forty-three cents.
No executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion by Councilman Wheeler, seconded by Councilman Benton, all in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. We are adjourned. Good evening and happy Fourth.